Good evening, everyone. I formally start the meeting of council. Remain everyone is turning phones on to silent, please. Can we start with apologies for absence?
We have apologies from councillors Bell, Frew, Lovett, Lawson, Christine Morrissey, PJ Morrissey, Karen Robinson, Story, David Wood, Margaret Wood, Stevie Wood and Williams.
Thank you very much. The council is two sets of minutes for approval. Does council agree to the minutes of the special meeting held on the 3rd of September 2025? Does council agree to the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 3rd of September 2025? Councillor Kane?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. At the last meeting, I asked councillor Ali about the status of the students in Newcastle forum. I've just had a response back within the hour saying that the new forum has no councillors on it. Now, at the May AGM, this council voted seven councillors into nine places, there were two vacancies, on the forum. Is this constitutional that seven of us can be booted off the forum without this going through Constitutional Committee or any other checks and balances? I thought the monitoring officer might be able to provide some guidance.
Okay, thank you. What's going to happen is the monitoring officer will take that back and have a look at it and he'll let you know the outcome. Yeah, sure. Councillor Burns?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think it's a point of order that a lot of responses were received very late in the day, sort of within the last hour or so, which makes it impossible for councils to prepare any follow-up questions. And would it be possible to have a look at this and ensure that in future, responses are received perhaps when the council agenda is published, which gives members time to consider their any follow-up or response to what's been said?
Well, I'm sure cabinet members have heard that plea and I'm sure they will act on it. Official announcements, I've, oh sorry, do we agree the minutes of the meeting? Agreed? Yes. Right, official announcements, I've received two requests for emergency motions, emergency notices of motion, I've decided to accept them both and for all, I don't really need to explain this to you, I'm going to explain the reasons for accepting both. I don't think either qualifies as emergency motions because one of them is about proposals that haven't yet been proposed and the other one is about a predictable event that's been known about all year, so a motion could have been submitted in time for the agenda. But if I take each of them in turn, I see the Black Lives Matter one, sorry, Black History Month, it's always this month every year, so we know when it's going to be next year, we know when it's going to be in 10 years, so there was plenty of time to get something in. Obviously, I understand what was said about, we've had lots of anti-immigration protests and therefore thought it was right to submit this as an emergency motion and I have accepted that. As we know, the protests have been aimed at anti-immigration, but it has affected other British citizens who have been attacked and had their businesses attacked simply because they're not white. So I do feel it's important that we do discuss this tonight so that we can give assurance to the BME, people who live in our city, you know, that we are with them and we support them. All my life, I've been an anti-racism campaigner, I mean, I was in the anti-apartheid mood, if you remember that, in the 1970s and went on rallies and things. So I see this as a very important motion and even though it's not strictly an emergency motion, I am willing to accept it because I really do think we should discuss this motion. On the other one, it could be argued as a less convincing argument for emergency status, but it has the luxury of actually being proposed following a statement by the Prime Minister, which was made after the close of the agenda. Now, yes, it could possibly have come to the next meeting and personally, I think the proposals are making a rod for their own back because once any concrete proposals come out, it may be that any future motion will become subject to the six-month rule and by my reckoning, it means we won't be able to discuss this issue again until June next year. But anyway, individual rights is also something that I've campaigned a lot on in my life, so I do feel that this is an important motion and also, I think it's fair, I try and be fair, you know, that there is an emergency motion from each side, neither of which I think is strictly an emergency, but I think it's only right and proper that we do discuss both. So they were the reasons for doing it and now he's in the chamber, can I just say, on the subject of the campaigns that's been against the immigration and the hotels, can I thank councillor Rollman for the leadership he's shown in the city with his attending and helping to organise all of the counter-protests and especially his efforts to speak to the people on the other side and try and share a consensus with them? I applaud that and I know there's been a few issues for you doing that and please, maybe don't put yourself in any danger, but I just want to put on record my thanks for everything you've done on that. Okay, we'll move on. Still unofficial announcements, the Bishop of Newcastle is conducting the Remembrance Sunday service at the War Memorial in Ellen Square on the 9th of November. Members will receive invitations to join me to pay our respects and I hope to see as many of you as possible on that day. Correspondence, no correspondence has been received this month. Petitions, similarly, there are no petitions this month. So we now come on to public questions and addresses, two requests to address council have been accepted for the agenda. Understanding Order 11 of the Council Procedure Rules, it allows a continuous period up to 15 minutes to allow members of the public to ask questions or to address the council. Written responses will be provided if the time limit is exceeded. So first of all, can I invite Mr Brian Moore to address council regarding road markings and mini roundabouts? Mr Moore?
Counsel, this will be the shortest question I think I will ever ask. Thank you. As we all know, there has been a recent surge in people painting red flags, Flag of St George, on roundabouts and I was very impressed that across the country, members of the public were first painting the mini roundabouts white. And then, it was a three o'clock in the morning moment, I thought, hold on, in the rest of the country, mini roundabouts are white. It's for someone who only drives normally around Newcastle, our mini roundabouts, like the rest of our road markings, are mostly grey or don't exist. Recently, councillor Dakenan made the observation that the bus lane between Regent Centre and Salter's Road doesn't exist. As the councillor who got that put in about 30 years ago, it hasn't been painted since. Councillor Colin Ferguson, on the same piece of road, is campaigning to get double yellow lines repainted. The forward and councillors went, yippee, we've got some, we've got some double yellow lines repainted in our ward. The issue now is it's getting dangerous and again, in Gosforth, we had Christian Road, children's lives were being put at risk because of the non-existent yellow box. As soon as it was painted, drivers respected the box. So what I'm basically saying here is the lack of road markings in Newcastle is dangerous. People are going to get injured or killed. So what I'm asking council is, what is council going to do to paint these road markings?
Okay, thank you, Mr Moore. A call on councillor Sethian, the cabinet member for Transport and Climate, to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr Moore, for your question and for highlighting this matter. Clear and visible road markings are essential for both safety and effective traffic management and I appreciate you highlighting the examples where the deterioration has had an impact. I can assure you that we are actively addressing this issue as part of our annual programme of works. We have already refreshed key routes, including the Central Motorway and Sandyford Road, Allen Tail Road, Walker Road and Barrett Road. Following engagement with councillor Ferguson, myself and the traffic management team, markings on Kendon Road have also been renewed to improve safety. In addition, we are refreshing double yellow lines across the city with works recently completed on Richardsend Road where the improvements are now clearly visible. The proposed scheme to the Gosforth Corridor will refresh these markings between Regent Centre and Salter's Road should this be required. Of course, Newcastle is a large city and demand is high, so we also rely on the public to let us know about specific problem areas. If residents or councillors report locations through your local services system, these will be assessed and added to our programme of works. So once again, thank you for your question and please be assured that improving road safety remains a priority for this administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Moore. If you wish to, we have looked to a minute to reply.
All I will say is, that's some great things you're doing, but actually to the problem, and I'm not, I can't blame the council because it's down to literally a lack of funding, but it really is a drop in an ocean of what the amount of paint that should be going on to the streets of Newcastle. But thank you for your comprehensive answer.
Thank you, Mr Moore. I'm now going to invite David Redwell to address the council regarding Newcastle Coach Station. Mr Redwell, can I give you my own personal apologies for the fact you're having to do this at the back of the meeting? You know, but please go ahead.
My question is about the state of the coach station, Newcastle City capital, the coach station, the present, it's a terrible impression of the Newcastle city regions playing where it's floorboarded and the area is covered in weeds and the civil access is not acceptable. Even though the coach is running, you know, day and night operated by an authority, but National Health does not own that coach station, it's owned by its local authority. So we're trying to find out really what the council's going to do to follow the progress of Liverpool, Manchester, the other city regions in the north to bring this coach station back into proper use. As I explained, I can't use the disabled ramp, it's so bad. If you could have a look.
Every year, so we know when it's going to be next year, we know when it's going to be in ten years. So there was plenty of time to get something in. Obviously, I understand what was said about, we've had lots of anti-immigration protests. And therefore, thought it was right to submit this as an emergency motion and I have accepted that. As we know, the protests have been aimed at anti-immigration. But it has affected other British citizens who have been attacked and had their businesses attacked simply because they're not white. So I do feel it's important that we do discuss this tonight. So that we can give assurance to the BME, people who live in our city, you know, that we are with them and we support them. All my life, I've been an anti-racism campaigner. I mean, I was in the anti-apartheid movement, if you remember that, in the nineteen seventies and went on rallies and things. So I see this as a very important motion. And even though it's not strictly an emergency motion, I am willing to accept it because I really do think we should discuss this motion. On the other one, it could be argued as a less convincing argument for emergency status. But it has the luxury of actually being proposed following a statement by the Prime Minister, which was made after the close of the agenda. Now, yes, it could possibly have come to the next meeting. And personally, I think the proposals are making a rod for their own back. Because once any concrete proposals come out, it may be that any future motion will become subject to the six-month rule. And by my reckoning, it means we won't be able to discuss this issue again until June next year. But anyway, individual rights is also something that I've campaigned a lot on in my life. So I do feel that this is an important motion. And also, I think it's fair, and I try and be fair, you know, that there is an emergency motion from each side, neither of which I think is strictly an emergency. But I think it's only right and proper that we do discuss both. So they were the reasons for doing it. And now he's in the chamber. Can I just say, on the subject of the campaigns that's been against the immigration and the hotels, can I thank councillor Rollman for the leadership he's shown in the city with his attending and helping to organise all of the counter-protests? And especially his efforts to speak to the people on the other side and try and share a consensus with them. I applaud that and I know there's been a few issues while you're doing that. And please, maybe don't put yourself in any danger. But I just want to put on record my thanks for everything you've done on that. Okay, we'll move on. Still unofficial announcements. The Bishop of Newcastle is conducting the Remembrance Sunday Service at the War Memorial in Eldon Square on the ninth of November. Members will receive invitations to join me to pay our respects. And I hope to see as many of you as possible on that day. Correspondence, no correspondence has been received this month. Petitions, similarly, there are no petitions this month. So we now come on to public questions and addresses. Two requests to address council have been accepted for the agenda. Understanding Order 11A of the Council Procedure Rules allows a continuous period up to fifteen minutes to allow members of the public to ask questions or to address the council. Written responses will be provided if the time limit is exceeded. So first of all, can I invite Mr Brian Moore to address council regarding road markings and mini roundabouts? Mr Moore.
Counsel, this will be the shortest question I think I will ever ask. Thank you. As we all know, there has been a recent surge in people painting red flags, Flag of St George, on roundabouts. And I was very impressed that across the country, members of the public were first painting the mini roundabouts white. And then, it was a three o'clock in the morning moment, I thought, hold on, in the rest of the country, mini roundabouts are white. It's for someone who only drives normally around Newcastle, our mini roundabouts, like the rest of our road markings, are mostly grey or don't exist. Recently, councillor Dokanand made the observation that the bus lane between Regent Centre and Salter's Road doesn't exist. As the councillor who got that put in about thirty years ago, it hasn't been painted since. Councillor Colin Ferguson, on the same piece of road, is campaigning to get double yellow lines repainted. The forward councillors went, yippee! We've got some, we've got some double yellow lines repainted in our ward. The issue now is it's getting dangerous. And again, in Gosforth, we had Christian Road. Children's lives were being put at risk because of the non-existent yellow box. As soon as it was painted, drivers respected the box. So what I'm basically saying here is the lack of road markings in Newcastle is dangerous. People are gonna get injured or killed. So what I'm asking council is, what is council gonna do to paint these road markings?
Okay, thank you, Mr Moore. A call on councillor Sethian, the Cabinet Member for Transport and Climate, to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr Moore, for your question and for highlighting this matter. Clear and visible road markings are essential for both safety and effective traffic management. And I appreciate you highlighting the examples where the deterioration has had an impact. I can assure you that we are actively addressing this issue as part of our annual programme of works. We have already refreshed key routes, including the Central Motorway and Sandyford Road, Allendale Road, Walker Road and Barrett Road. Following engagement with councillor Ferguson, myself and the traffic management team, markings on Kendon Road have also been renewed to improve safety. In addition, we are refreshing double yellow lines across the city with works recently completed on Richards End Road, where the improvements are now clearly visible. The proposed scheme to the Gosforth Corridor will refresh these markings between Regent Centre and Slatter Slote, should this be required. Of course, Newcastle is a large city and demand is high. So we also rely on the public to let us know about specific problem areas. If residents or councillors report locations through your local services system, these will be a stand where appropriate added to our programme of works. So once again, thank you for your question and please be assured that improving road safety remains a priority for this administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Moore. If you wish to, I'll look to a minute to reply.
All I will say is, that's some great things you're doing. But actually, to the problem, and I'm not, I can't blame the council because it's down to literally a lack of funding. But it really is a drop in an ocean of what, the amount of paint that should be going on to the streets of Newcastle. But thank you for your comprehensive answer.
Thank you, Mr Moore. I'm now going to invite David Redwell to address the council regarding Newcastle Coach Station. Mr Redwell, can I give you my own personal apologies for the fact you're having to do this at the back of the meeting? You know, but please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So my question, if I may ask, is about the state of the coach station. Newcastle City Council, the coach station, down at St James' Boulevard. The present, it's a terrible impression of the Newcastle City region playing where it's floorboarded up and the area is covered in weeds and the civil access is not acceptable. Even though coaches run in there day and night, operated by a national express, do not own that coach station, it's owned by its local authority. So we're trying to find out really what the council's gonna do to follow the courses of Liverpool, Manchester, we've got mayors and the other city regions in the north to bring this coach station back into proper use. As I explained, I can't use the disabled ramps, they're so bad. If you could have a look, it's absolutely off ground, it looks like something, it's just shocking. I have to get off the coach when I come into Newcastle. Either a gate set or Darren can get a local bus up. Not everyone uses trains. So we're asking why you've not discussed the issue of perhaps renting this to a taxi operator? Or a cafe, could you liven up the coach station? Or have Nexus, who run the bus stations in Haymarket, Elton Square, they're in reason to speak. Certainly, the coaches facilities in John Dobson Street are awful. Outside the library and the cafe, there's no shelter, there's no facility. And yet, coaches run through there day and night, both Scottish Signal to London and Flixbus to Bristol and London, across the Manchester penway. So I understand Flixbus run today, they're trying to reach a head of agreement to release that coach station. So they could run alongside National Express and Scottish Signal. So I think what we wanna do, when I spoke to the mayor of the North East, Kim McGuinness, and I spoke to her officers, she'd gone over months. Will she take it over? Will Nexus take it over? It just can't carry on like this. You know, I don't know what impression you think it gives to economic development. I say, you know, the Washington line's great, you know, I'm loving the Manchester speed on the rating. But people use buses and coaches and the Nexus transport, they should be concentrating on this. So it really is shocking. It's in the right location, it's right next to the railway station with Newcastle Central. It's got train services across the north, it's got trains for London, it's got all the hotels situated around the railway station. I don't think you can find a better place for Heidi Alexander's white paper in a railway transport, if you wanted to produce one. But it is in a shocking state and it just looks to me, and my colleagues and the traffic user group in Newcastle, who are also campaigning on this, that there's just finger pointing between the council and National Express. Well, National Express is just an operator of coaches. Have you ever tried to look at the coach station in Manchester? Steve Roberts and the mayor providing the coach station for Liverpool one. They don't pay their own nose, they just parky park run through. They fly in direct transport across the north and into London. Tracy Brayden's just renovated Bradford Coach Station and Leeds is beautiful. And they're all owned by local government and they're all owned by Labour mayors, really. So really, the question is here, what actions are council gonna take? Will it transfer it to Nexus to run, like the bus stations? Will it have a sensible discussion with Kim McGuinness or all of our back four and our officers who I met in the government summit the other day on buses in Leeds? And can we have some action, rather than just simply saying, we've got no money, this council's not broke? It can afford you a coach station, I'm in a wheelchair, I've rights to services. I'm in Newcastle four times a month, five times a month. I need to use the coach station, we're in a wheelchair, disabled people, need to get on the north buses twenty-four seven. I'm asking for that coach station to be, I've been up, spoke to officers, oh, we're gonna clean it, we're gonna get the, or the debris off. We're gonna remove the weeds and tumbleweeds, we're gonna clear it. Why is there a bit of nesting season on it? You should never have tumbleweed growing all over anywhere. The council has a legal duty to maintain it. And there's no point in that two five hundred ten, I'm detecting characteristic. The law's on my side, the Labour Government's on my side, I'm asking this council, with Nexus and the mayor, on behalf of the traffic users in the city and the city region, and actually also to stop it. National Express appear to meet in October today, that's Kevin Gale. Flixbus want to use it and Scottish City can run it, they run a very few services now. But they would all of them look to come on Dr Dobson Street and run the proper coach station. Can we please have some action? Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll call on councillor Sethian again to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr Redwell, for your question regarding the coach station, which I understand you have also raised separately with the mayor's office, which we responded to on nineteenth of September. There is a long history with the coach station and it is useful to explain this. Under a previous lease, National Express were responsible for operating and maintaining the whole station. However, in February twenty twenty-two, they removed their staff and greatly reduced their services from the station. The termination of this lease also resulted in the loss of income from National Express, which has led to a cost pressure to the authority. This withdrawal meant that the building which housed the waiting room, toilets and ticket office was closed. Newcastle City Council are not obliged to continue to provide those facilities for coaches still using the station, although we fully understand the desire for these to be available. The city council has also been made aware of an increase in the litter around the station, even though there is both a public litter bin and a trade bin for use by passengers and National Express. The public bin is emptied twice a week and the trade bin once per week. Due to several complaints regarding rubbish at the station, cleansing has now been increased. And a general sweep of the station is carried out once per week, rather than every fortnight. National Express have also been reminded of the requirement for the drivers and passengers to dispose of rubbish in the bins provided, rather than leaving this on the ground. On the condition of this site, we are aware that trees needed to be trimmed back. This could not take place during the summer due to the bird nesting season, but this work is planned for this autumn. Grounds maintenance has also been requested to remove the weeds inside the station and this should be carried out in the very near future. Looking ahead, Transport and Property Services are currently working with National Express and Flixbus and Heads of Terms are now being drafted for all parties. These documents will be shared with the operators for their comments and once an agreement is reached, it is hoped that Flixbus will be able to relocate their services into the coach station. This would be a significant step forward in, forward, reducing the reliance on the John Dobson Street for coach pickup and drop-off. The city council will continue to maintain overall responsibility for the station under the proposed Heads of Terms. At present, the former National Express building, which included the ticket office, waiting room and toilets, remains closed. However, as new operating arrangements are established, there will be opportunities to look again at how these facilities might be brought back into use for near future. For information, Newcastle City Council also remain responsible for the maintenance of both Haymarket and Eldon Square bus stations. Finally, on your request for the North East Mayor to hold a public question time, we will pass this on to Mayor Kim McGuinness. Mayor already has monthly Q and A on BBC Radio Newcastle. So thank you once again for your question and I hope this demonstrate the actions being taken to maintain and improve the coach station, as well as the discussion underway to secure its future use. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sethian. David, you can have up to a minute to reply.
I think all I'd ask is that Kim McGuinness has got budgets, she's got bus budgets, she's got Nexus budgets. Let's go to conversation with the mayor, who's now got the responsibility of human agents. See if she can fund this coach station and get it into the shape that all the other coach stations in transport for the north are in. And with the council and the combined authority and the mayor takes some responsibility. It's not just trains and metros that benefit the people of Newcastle, it's buses and coaches. And we need good connectivity and a quality of service and a well-designed coach station. It's about investment in this city region. If you've got a look at that, you go to the coach, will you invest all your money here? Will you put time and love into this city? I ask the big question, you need to get it sorted.
Thank you very much. Right, we will now move on to item number seven, overview and scrutiny annual report. I now invite, oh, sorry. Councillor Donnelly.
Lord Mayor, considering the importance of this matter, understanding orders eleven G, could I ask that this be referred back to Cabinet and then subsequently come back to City Council with an update? I've also got a second, though, Lord Mayor.
Okay. Okay, we've checked that, that is in orders, council agree to that action?
Agreed.
Yep, okay, fine, thank you very much. Now we'll move to item seven, overview and scrutiny annual report. I invite councillor Ferguson to present the annual report, to be sent in by councillor Penny Evans.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll keep my introductory comments brief because I think the value in this item is in the questions and comments from members. I just want to place formally on record at this meeting, my thanks, first of all, to the officers that support the work of the scrutiny committees, particularly Kate and Stuart, but also all of those that work behind the scenes to ensure that our business is conducted thoroughly and properly. The members that sit in the committees are the ones that are visible, but it's the officers that often do all of the work behind the scenes and they get very little credit for it. And I'd also like to place on record my thanks to my fellow committee chairs for the work that they've done and to all of the members who have contributed to scrutiny business over the course of the past year. I'm glad that we've got this report in front of us, I think it speaks for itself and I'm happy to take any questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Penny Evans.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to mainly echo what councillor Ferguson has said and put on record a thanks to all of the members from all across the different scrutiny committees and all of the staff that help us to do, fulfil our really important role. Because scrutiny is the cornerstone of really good democratic governance. I'd also like to thank Colin Ferguson as the Chair of Scrutiny. I think we've had some really good, interesting meetings, we've managed some call-ins over the past time. But I'm really pleased that there has been some good discussions around the future of scrutiny and how there's been emphasis and importance put on scrutiny going forward. Because scrutiny doesn't just play a part in what's already happened or what decisions have already been made, but it can also really influence future decisions and future policy. So again, I just want to formally second.
Thank you, councillor Penny Evans. Right, we can now move on to a debate. I have four people who've indicated they'd like to speak. So can I call on councillor Mitchell? Is it Mark Mitchell, is it, yeah? Councillor Higgins, please stand ready.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to add my support to this report and also mention a little bit the work of the Finance and Budget Monitoring Committee, where again, I think a lot of councillors have done a lot of work over the last year to look into various issues of interest. And I think the committee as a whole has worked very cooperatively, cooperatively in a cross-party manner. Some councillors will also be aware, following what I've also been saying at audit, that one of my major concerns is send funding for the council. And I know we are expecting a white paper, but I am also somewhat worried that we are wholly reliant on the goodwill of the government in this area. So I would be interested, councillor Ferguson, on your views as to how scrutiny will move forward on the send-transport issues, especially if the government does not perhaps go as far as we would expect in solving this issue for us.
Thank you very much. Can councillor Stone please stand ready, councillor Higgins?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It is no great secret that I am not the greatest enthusiast for cabinet-style local government. I joined the council during the era of service committees, when all elected members contributed actively to the decision-making process and as such felt that we all had an active role to play. With the advent of Cabinet, there has been a sense of backbenchers at times feeling marginalised and hence the reason why I cling so doggedly to the remnants of member services, which to me is so symbolic, and also why I actively support the scrutiny process with my current participation in three scrutiny committees. Scrutiny is the voice of the backbencher in holding the executive to account and an opportunity to speak on behalf of our residents about the impact of council policy affecting their lives. Sometimes I must admit to feeling a bit like a voice in the wilderness, when surrounded by such fountains of wisdom and knowledge. But nonetheless, it is important to raise our voice and to have our say. Moreover, I would like to express my own thanks to those officers who are so patient and diligent in responding to the questions of myself and others and explaining things in a way that I can understand, even though at times I myself feel a bit like a schoolboy putting my hand up for the classroom teacher, particularly when I attend finance committee. Although I recognise the pressure and demands on the time of elected members, it is disappointing to see continued vacancies on scrutiny committees. It is your voice on the council and as with member services, my message to you is, if we don't use it, we will lose it. So I urge colleagues to offer your support wherever you can in the future. Can I finally offer my thanks to councillor Ferguson for his skills in chairing the overview and scrutiny committee? We tend to experience a much more emollient version than the somewhat pugnacious councillor Ferguson of the council chamber. I also appreciate that when matters go to a casting vote, it can be a struggle for the Chair of Committee or even the Chair of Council to remain non-partisan. But overall, I am reassured by councillor Ferguson's fairness and even-handed approach, which is beneficial to all and I look forward to the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Higgins, councillor Stone. And can councillor Taylor stand ready, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you to councillor Ferguson for the report. Obviously, I am rising to speak as the, quite for the last time, as Chair of the Economic Jobs and Skills Scrutiny Committee. I obviously value the role of scrutiny in this council and I'm pleased to say that it has got a very good reputation, I think, not just here in the region, but further afield as well, for the work that we are doing for engagement with scrutiny in Newcastle. I wanted to make a particular plea to all councillors, not just to councillor Ferguson, but just in terms of the importance that we don't lose sight of the importance of looking at the economy and jobs and skills in the new arrangements. I think it is an important issue for the future of the city and we do need to be giving it due and proper attention. I get there needs to be a restructuring and reorganisation of the arrangements, but I just want to make the plea that even if it's not me chairing it, we need to make sure that we still speak up and we do focus on the issues affecting the economy in Newcastle because it does affect all our prosperity and everyone's life opportunities and chances. So that is important. And my final point on this one would be just for the overview and scrutiny committee's attention going forward. I think that it is gonna be important for all of us in this council chamber and in the city to look at how the progress is being made on the local plan. And I would hope that the local plan can be factored into the work plan for either the overview and scrutiny committee or a new scrutiny committee that comes out of the shake-up. But there is important work to be done there in terms of looking at how that process is going and how that will go forward in Newcastle. So just my little parting shot from the Chair of EJS, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stone. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just wanted to say a few words about the work of Health and Social Care Scrutiny Committee and to thank the officers and members for their full engagement in a very important agenda. Obviously, we look at council services and the visits described in the report were extremely interesting and useful and showed us just how hard our staff are working in various difficult situations. But it's not just our council services that we look at. We look at a lot of other external services that are important to the health and wellbeing of citizens of the city, including the work of the hospitals, the ambulance service. We've looked at the pharmacy provision in the city, we've heard about social prescribing, we look at the work of Health Watch. And very importantly, we're starting to look at the proposals in the ten-year health plan to see just exactly how that will work in Newcastle. So it really is a very important committee and I would encourage members who haven't thought about being involved to be involved in future.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Ferguson, do you wish to sum up?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I committed a singular error in my opening comments because I totally forgot to thank my vice-chair. Sorry, Claire. It's always a thing that I've enjoyed to work previously as Chair of Finance Scrutiny and now as Chair of Overview and Scrutiny on a cross-party basis because I think it's incredibly important for members of this chamber to be able to demonstrate that we can work cross-party and constructively on matters of shared civic importance. And scrutiny is a key and critical vehicle for that. That is perhaps, to councillor Higgins' point, why you find me slightly less pugnacious there. Because we've also got to have our space for disagreement. I think that's here, but not there. So the point phrased by councillor Mitchell, I think the work of finance scrutiny is incredibly important, particularly as local government continues to face extremely difficult financial challenges when it's clear that there isn't a lot of money coming. challenges when it's clear that there isn't a lot of money coming. And so the matter of special educational needs funding, I think we need to keep coming back to that, I think we need to keep asking questions about it, I think we need to keep pressing for answers that come locally and I think that it's been a good thing that we have been able to get visibility for that critical issue at a local level within finance scrutiny and shows the value of the work that scrutiny does. councillor Higgins, you mentioned cabinet-style local government and your feelings about that. I mean, I think you're absolutely right that scrutiny provides that vehicle for backbench members, opposition members, to be able to contribute to the policy development process, to the check and balance that you have on executive authority. One of the things that I think is important and something that we need to look at much more is the use of task and finish groups on specific policy matters because I think if you look at some of the task and finish groups that we've had over the past few years, they have really added value, actually, I think, on a cross-party basis and I've always welcomed the engagement that cabinet have given to the recommendations that have come out of those groups. My final couple of comments, just to say, councillor Stone, I hear what you say about keeping one very close eye on economic development. I'm very conscious that with the combined authority now up and in full swing, it would be easy to see all of the answers to those questions coming from there, but there absolutely is an incredibly important role for us locally, not just in terms of the place-making but in terms of making sure that we are asking critical questions, supportive but critical questions, of what the combined authority is doing on our behalf. And that ties into that point that you made about the local plan. I think it's incredibly important that we keep a close eye on the development of the local plan because it will shape the city for years to come, but it will also interact with the combined authority's spatial development strategy. Now, I was in a meeting earlier this week with other chairs of combined authority scrutiny committees and I think we all have questions about how the spatial development strategies of combined authorities and the local plans of local authorities will interact. And so I think it's critically important at both levels that scrutiny pays very, very close attention to the development of those critical strategic documents. I don't have much to add to councillor Taylor's comments other than to thank her and committee members on health and social care scrutiny for all that you do. That's all that I have to say, colleagues. Thank you very much for all of your support for scrutiny this year and we look forward to the remaining meetings of this municipal year.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. Has council agreed to receive the report? Before we move on to questions by members, I forgot to say something before when the points of order were raised with the minutes. Can I just add a personal greeting to councillor Stowe-Wallgast? Nice to see you back here, John. Most welcome. Right, eight questions by members. Three questions marked for reply were received and published on the agenda and they are deemed to have been put. Understanding Order 9 of the Council Procedure Rules, 15 minutes is allocated to this item. Written responses will be provided if the time does run out. So the first question is from councillor Ferguson to councillor Kilgawa regarding the independent inquiry into political governance. Can I invite councillor Kilgawa to respond to the question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Ferguson for your question. As councillor Ferguson is aware, it was agreed that the inquiry would be initiated following the conclusion of another matter, so I do not agree that this has been delayed. Indeed, given how long the matter took to conclude, earlier in the summer, I asked council officers to instigate discussions with the Local Government Association to allow the inquiry to begin. This work can now be picked up in earnest and I do hope all members will engage with it productively.
Thank you, councillor Kilgawa. councillor Ferguson, do you wish to ask a supplemental?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. I think it's regrettable that we've had to wait as long as we have, given that there was a cross-party agreement that this was an important matter to look into. Would you agree with me that having had a delay to the start of this process, that we must make sure there is no delay to the conclusion of it and that we should set very, very clear expectations for when we will hear the recommendations from it?
councillor Kilgawa?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, I think that's a really valid point. I think this has been a learning curve for us all, we haven't been in this situation before. I absolutely agree that this needs to be concluded in a sensible and swift manner, allowing enough time for it to be carried out properly and I'm very happy to work with other group leaders to discuss timescales.
Thank you, councillor Kilgawa. councillor Mark Mitchell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm sure the councillors are aware that there was a discussion at audit and standards on the matter to which you referred and I think we all understand the confidential nature of that. However, it would seem sensible that at least there should be some attempt to learn lessons from that process. So my question is, how can we make sure that the events that have happened previously and the conclusions that are contained within the existing report are made available to the committee and others as they look at this situation going forward?
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. councillor Kilgawa?
As councillor Mitchell is aware, these are two very different things. An investigation into a complaint has to remain confidential. The input from both the person who has complained, the person who has been complained about, other witnesses involved have to be able to be confident that the information they have given is confidential. Our staff need to know that if they make a complaint, if they whistleblow, if they are asked to be interviewed because somebody else has made a complaint, that what they have said will remain confidential and not published, released at the whim of some councillors who have decided they want to see a confidential report. So that is one thing. The independent inquiry is something completely different. That's about the culture of the organisation, we've agreed to bring the LGA in, we are in charge of the terms of reference for that inquiry, which again was agreed with group leaders. So it'll be a very different, it's a very different set of circumstances, it'll be a very different report that's produced and yes, the learning from that will be shared with all members.
Thank you, councillor Kilgawa. The second question is from councillor Kane to councillor Hay regarding the waste incinerator project. Can I invite councillor Hay to respond to the question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The council's vision in our waste strategy is clear. Newcastle is a clean, green and sustainable city that wastes less and recycles more. We are committed to increasing recycling, reducing waste and sending as little as possible to landfill. Newcastle's population is rapidly growing. Between 2011 and 2021, more than 20,000 new residents made our city their home. That is the largest percentage increase in the North East and above the national average. This growth is built into our waste forecasts. The TVERF has been designed with this in mind. It takes account of our plans to collect food waste separately and significantly increase recycling. But even with these improvements, there will always be some residual waste generated. We are not feeding the beast, we are responsibly planning for how to manage Newcastle's residual waste while at the same time working to ensure residents recycle more and waste less. The opposition oppose the TVERF yet present no alternative. Their proposal is to gamble on short-term contracts, paying higher costs in the hope that a new technology for recycling residual waste will emerge at scale in the next five to 10 years. Such technology does not currently exist and the options available today are the same as they were in 2019 when we joined the TVERF project. We cannot gamble with taxpayers' money or our city's future, we need a solution now. The TVERF provides that solution. It is safe, reliable, it has been market-tested, procured through a robust process and represents best value. The Section 151 officer has been clear withdrawing from the TVERF would be reckless, it would expose the council to immediate unbudgeted multi-million pound costs, destabilise our finances and leave Newcastle with the highest waste treatment costs in the region. There is no alternative.
Over the 40 years of this contract, what policy changes and technology improvements do you believe we're likely to miss out on and have to wait for?
councillor Hay?
As I said in my initial response, such technology does not currently exist. I don't know what's going to be produced in the next 35 to 40 years and neither does the opposition. We have to be pragmatic, we have to take an approach which leads to our residual waste being treated. We're taking that approach, we're not gambling on our city's cleanliness and future.
Thank you, councillor Hay. The final question is from councillor Coles to councillor Sathian regarding the carbon and nature marketplace. Can I invite councillor Sathian to respond to the question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Coles for your question. The carbon and nature marketplace is still at an early stage and I agree it's important that we continue to build both the project pipeline and investor confidence in it. NECA is currently in the process of securing additional resources, including a PR communication and engagement package. This will support two key areas. First, developing a pipeline of investable projects, including biodiversity net gain opportunities, and second, attracting investment from both public and private sources. Within the council, our climate change team are working across different services to develop suitable projects that can be placed on the platform. A good example is the Blue Green Newcastle Programme, which launched on the 29th of September, where work is underway to create opportunities that can be listed and supported through the marketplace. At the same time, we are supporting the NECA in promoting the platform more widely. Officers are working closely with them on communications and engagement and I receive regular updates on progress as this falls within more than one of the portfolio areas. Alongside this, I have been actively raising awareness of the marketplace through my own external engagement, highlighting it in the climate change forums, in discussion with regional partners and in conversation with local businesses to encourage investment and uptake. My focus is to ensure that both the supply of strong projects and the demand for investment grow together so that the marketplace become a meaningful tool for funding nature recovery and carbon reduction across our region. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sathian. councillor Coles, would you like to ask a supplemental?
No, actually, I'm pretty satisfied with the response. Thank you.
Brilliant, thank you very much. In that case, can I call on councillor Higgins to ask a supplemental? can councillor Mark Mitchell stand ready, please?
I do believe that councillor Sathian's answered my question as well, but I'll still put the question as to perhaps a bit more detail about this particular project because obviously it's known to people on Climate Change Committee but perhaps we in the council chamber with a real interest would like a bit more detail about it and also about the potential that this can lever in further funding in the future because I like to think that sometimes a modest investment in the climate and climate change can bring rich rewards in the future. So maybe councillor Sathian, you could sort of elaborate on that?
councillor Higgins, thank you. councillor Sathian?
Thank you, thank you councillor Higgins for the question. So two projects have received 1,000 pounds each in funding on the carbon marketplace so far, both of which are located in the Newcastle boundary. Both of these projects are led by the charity Groundwork North East and Cambria and focus on habitat enhancement. So the first project seeks to install floating islands along a kilometre stretch of the River Tyne, creating a revolved area in the heart of the city. The second project seeks to restore an area of salt marsh at Walker Riverside Park, transforming the site into a living laboratory of nature-based solutions. These two projects will bring biodiversity, water quality and climate adaptation benefits to the city and local communities. The fact that Newcastle was selected as the first local authority to receive funding shows the attraction that our city has for inward investment back into our local communities. The council continues to support the North East Combined Authority in seeking additional projects and investors as members of the Carbon Marketplace Project Advisory Board. This includes the addition of Blue Green Newcastle Project to the marketplace, which will open up investment opportunities for local organisations across Newcastle to invest in creating a green and more resilient city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sathian. councillor Mitchell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. One of the areas where projects can qualify for listing is retrofitting buildings, energy efficiency and building decarbonisation projects. Could the cabinet member comment on whether those specifically are being looked at by the council, given first of all, we own many, many council houses and secondly, we also have significant properties, commercial and office space within the city?
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. councillor Sathian?
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. So carbon credits and nature recovery, two different things. So carbon credit is about measurable CO2 reduction and nature recovery, we are looking into social value projects. So within Newcastle, if I talk about the project, the total investable value of project currently listed on the marketplace is around 1.3 million. So these are especially four projects. New Bern Estuary Edges, so for habitat creation. Town Move, we are talking about tree planting. Newcastle Deport, about new clean room and housing retrofit credits. So this is the only project offering carbon offset credits. So the remaining projects are solely seeking investment and are not selling credit. So basically, the remaining three projects will bring biodiversity, water quality and social value into the wider vision.
Thank you, councillor Sathian. That ends the oral questions. The response to the written question is included in the supplemental agenda and published on the website. Now we come to item number nine, the Cabinet Statement. I now call on councillor Kilgawa to present the report.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased tonight to deliver our first Cabinet Statement. It's a new process, and we may not get it 100% right straight away, but we'll learn and we'll adapt as we go. As a city, we of course continue to face widespread challenges, and we are acutely aware of the everyday difficulties our communities come up against. But there is also so much to welcome and celebrate across each of our portfolios. For instance, we've secured £2.7 million to expand our supported employment service, which will specifically support those facing complex barriers to access the skills and opportunities they need to reach their full potential. With continued inward investment coming into the city, such as in life sciences, data and AI, finance and banking, creative industries and many others, we are doing the groundwork to ensure Newcastle's residents can benefit from generational opportunities while helping to put more money in people's pockets and reducing pressures on overstretched services. Newcastle's reputation for hosting world-class events under a global spotlight is well-known and hard-earned. We've enjoyed recent examples of this with another spectacular Great North Run, the return of the magic of European nights at St James's Park, and in the spring, the unforgettable occasion of 300,000 people celebrating Newcastle United's first domestic trophy success in 70 years, generating memories that will long live on. We're also growing our reputation as a major player in the UK's music scene. We've already hosted the MOBOs, and this month, for the first time ever, the prestigious Mercury Prize will take place outside of London, right here in Newcastle, alongside an exciting fringe programme for our communities to get involved in. With such events and a state-of-the-art music studio on the way, we're ensuring our residents have opportunities to reach their potential right here and not have to move elsewhere to realise their dreams. We're helping to tackle the national housing crisis, working with partners to secure £120 million to deliver around 2,500 new homes at Fourth Yards, revitalising a prime location on our already world-famous quayside, underpinned by a regional framework to accelerate business creation, jobs growth and new opportunities for Newcastle and our neighbours. This alongside a movement strategy that aims to create a fair and accessible transport network that offers real and viable choice, that meets people's needs, whatever their circumstance. The health and wellbeing of our communities remains at the top of our priorities, and I am pleased that our collaboration with health partners saw the reversal of the decision to close two community pharmacies, bringing essential services back to residents' doorsteps and easing pressure on GPs and walk-in centres. And we continue to look at how we can deliver a fairer and more equitable Newcastle for our communities, lobbying for changes that allow us to plan years ahead rather than months, how we can reform an overworked and underfunded social care system that is constantly being asked to do more for less, and how we, as those who know our city, can work with government to find better ways to meet the needs and concerns of our securities, providing homes for families and our veterans, as well as those fleeing unimaginable conditions elsewhere in the world. Lord Mayor, I'd like to take a moment to reflect on events last weekend, if I may. I received a lot of correspondence asking me to take action to stop protests taking place. I was clear that this is a lawful right for all citizens, and it is not my place, nor that of Northumbria Police, to shut it down. And I want to express my gratitude to the council officers, the police and all other partner agencies who ensured our city continued to operate during the demonstrations on Saturday. I strongly believe that Newcastle will always be a city that stands shoulder to shoulder with the vulnerable and those in need. When times get tough, we are neighbours who have each other's backs. We are friendly, caring and we celebrate our diversity. We are a city of black and white, we are a city that will always be united. There is so much pride in this city, and we're doing all we can to reinforce that strength of feeling, from carefully restoring the icon of our region, the Tyne Bridge, to installing new accessible play spaces for children of all ages and abilities, investing and tackling the backlog of pothole repairs and tidying up our neighbourhoods and the approaches into Newcastle, with more officers out doing more of what matters most to our communities. My cabinet and I are clear in our resolve to deliver effective services, cleaner and safer neighbourhoods, quality homes and united communities, with a city that is easy to get around and where opportunities are open to all, and that is exactly what we are doing. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Kilgaw. As councillor Kilgaw said, this is a new format for us, so there are now going to be five questions. I will ask each member to read out their question for the cabinet member to respond. So the first question is from councillor Chisholm to councillor Kilgawa regarding the workforce support. Councillor Chisholm?
My question is about the events of the weekend, I think. So last weekend, many of our council colleagues were put in a stressful, difficult situation with the, I'm sorry, there's been a problem with my printer and I can't actually read my own question. I'm going to ask my colleague.
Yes, no problem.
Last weekend, so many of our council colleagues worked hard alongside our partners in emergency services to ensure that our city remains safe and that protest activity passed without incident. We should be proud of the daily role that our colleagues play to strengthen Newcastle's communities and ensure that we remain united. What can this council do to support our workforce, help colleagues to manage the impact of high tension events on their personal and professional lives, and demonstrate to them that we will not tolerate any forms of discrimination in our city?
Thank you both. Councillor Kilgaw?
Thank you, thank you, Alistair, for your question. Newcastle is renowned for its unity, for communities coming together in the face of adversity and for people looking out for one another. We saw that in abundance again on Saturday. That the day events pass without incident isn't by chance. Alongside our partners, our staff work tirelessly, as you said, to keep our communities safe, to engage our children and young people, and to reiterate the values that make Newcastle the special place it is. Our emergency services did an incredible job in managing an extremely complex operation, and, as rightly noted, our workforce was an incredibly important part of that process. The message I delivered ahead of the weekend's protest is the same that has been given to staff. Newcastle is a city of unity and inclusivity. Hate, discrimination and abuse has no place here. Our chief executive reiterated this when she wrote to all staff, making it clear that abusive and racist behaviours will not be tolerated and that all staff can expect support if they have concerns or directly experience such behaviours. We would ask staff to alert their managers should they experience any behaviour of this kind. Some staff groups who are most likely to experience such behaviours, such as enforcement officers and wardens, are equipped with body-worn cameras. As part of our health and safety training, staff are trained in and where appropriate, more detailed conflict resolution training, in addition to processes around lone working, with relevant staff issued with lone working devices. We're also acutely aware of the increased prevalence of racist, hateful and discriminatory messaging online, and that this can also impact many of our colleagues, both at work and at home. I urge staff to report incidents of hate crime to the police, and our communications team are also responding robustly to any such messages on our social media, and I thank them for that. All of our staff and members have access to our employee assistance programme, where they can access support if they experience or witness any such behaviour. The role our officers play in the life of our city should never be taken for granted. I am incredibly proud of them and grateful to them, and rightly so. Their safety and wellbeing will always be an absolute priority to us.
Thank you councillor Kilgaw. Can I say I also give my thanks to the communications team for the robust way they are responding on social media to people?
That's appreciated, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Next question is councillor Ferguson, which is also to councillor Kilgawa. This is on the mayoral development zone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And if you would permit me a brief moment of latitude, just to echo the leader's comments regarding the events on Saturday, I think it's absolutely appropriate that where there is legitimate protest, whether we agree with it or not, that it is permitted to take place. But ultimately, I think Newcastle did itself proud on Saturday, and I want to add my thanks to all of those officers within the council and in other organisations and agencies that made sure that events went over safely and securely. For anyone who continues to feel concerned and fearful about those events, know that we all stand with you. The establishment, to my question, of a mayoral development zone is described as an option that is being considered in the paper, and yet the first full paragraph on page four of the report describes that option as "the boldest and most ambitious mayoral development initiative in the country", suggesting that it is a foregone conclusion that we will hand over significant powers for the combined authority to impose their decisions on Newcastle. Under what circumstances would Newcastle refuse to enter into such an agreement?
Thank you very much councillor Ferguson. Councillor Kilgaw?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Again, if you can just indulge me for a moment, I'm grateful for your comments and for councillor Ferguson's comments. I think this is one area where we can all agree across the chamber that right-wing rhetoric is not welcome in this city, and our staff's safety is an absolute top priority for all of us. And so to the answer, the outcome of this work and the recommendations from it are by no means a foregone conclusion. I don't intend to join the leader of the opposition in speculation on potential circumstances under which this authority may or may not take a course of action that is not even yet a proposal. I can however assure councillor Ferguson that we will only ever act in the interests of this city and our residents, nor will we let opportunities pass us by that could create jobs, homes and thriving communities. There will be opportunity for scrutiny at both a combined authority and a council level, and I am sure councillor Ferguson will take those opportunities when they arise.
Thank you very much councillor Kilgaw. To let colleagues know that, one of our colleagues has been taken ill tonight and is outside the chamber, is being attended to, and I believe an ambulance is coming, just in case you should bump into them when you leave the chamber. Okay, thank you. The next question is from councillor Cairns to councillor Here regarding the review of planning advisory service. Councillor Cairns?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I just want to welcome the cabinet report, and I think this is an interesting and challenging formula. Peer challenges are an important part for councils to identify and prioritise areas for development or improvement, and the recent independent review of our planning advisory service, of which many of us actually took part, took an in-depth look at our planning functions to see how well we were delivering our duties. What has cabinet learned about its strengths and which recommendations does it feel present most challenges, positive and negative, for our future ambitions?
Thank you very much councillor Cairns. Councillor Here?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Newcastle City Council commissioned the Local Government Association's Planning Advisory Service to undertake a comprehensive review of its planning service. The purpose was to ensure the service is aligned with the council's strategic ambitions, operating efficiently and delivering value for money. The findings of the review were incredibly positive. Over the course of the three days of detailed scrutiny, the team concluded that the planning service is performing exceptionally well. Staff across the service demonstrated a strong sense of pride in Newcastle and a clear commitment to delivering for the city. Their dedication to public service and a shared ambition to support Newcastle's growth were evident throughout the review. The service was recognised for its longstanding strengths, including the production of robust planning policies, high-quality decision-making, effective engagement with regional partners and strong delivery against strategic priorities. The current team continues to build on this legacy, consistently performing across all key areas. The planning service is acknowledged as a critical enabler of the council's wider objectives and a cornerstone of its success. The review highlighted Newcastle as a national leader in digital planning too. The council is delivering a range of innovative projects that promise tangible benefits for officers, applicants and residents alike. While the service, apologies, is already strong, the review identified opportunities to enhance its effectiveness further. Ten recommendations were made, with the most pressing being a review of the current structure of the Development Management Service. The PAS team concluded that the existing structure may be limiting, and the service ability to support staff and deliver optimal outcomes for residents and for the council could be improved. To address this, its recommendation that the planning service develops a business case to support additional resources and a restructure is underway, and will continue to ensure that the ten recommendations that were made are implemented and that our planning service goes from strength to strength. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Here. Councillor Cookson, ask a question to councillor Kilgawa again regarding the pipeline of city investment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's great to see the pipeline of investment in the city over the coming years celebrated in this report. Unfortunately, residents and businesses have seen that multiple projects being delivered by the council have been significantly delayed. Northumberland Street is extended into next year, the Outer West Leisure Centre is delayed with no firm completion date, and the Central Station gateway is stalled, along with many other transport schemes. Can I ask the leader what steps the council are taking to ensure that there is both sufficient project management and robust governance and sufficient capacity on the delivery side to successfully deliver this programme on time and on budget and for the benefit of residents and businesses across the city?
Councillor Kilgaw?
Thank you. Thank you councillor Cookson for your question. As a former project and programme manager myself, I fully endorse the need for robust project management, including good governance and oversight. I also recognise that we can't mitigate global influences that affect our ability to deliver, including a pandemic and a war in Ukraine, which has affected suppliers' materials. And I would remind councillor Cookson that this council delivers multiple projects every year, on budget and on time, with a capital programme of around £150 million per annum. I'd love to be in a position to bolster still further our hard-working team of officers, rather than taking potshots at them, but this council continues to deal with the impacts of 14 years of Liberal Democrat and Tory-led austerity, which have seen our budgets reduced by nearly £400 million a year. Perhaps councillor Cookson could reflect on that before criticising council officers who are not in a position to defend themselves.
Thank you councillor Kilgaw. The final question was from councillor Fairley to councillor Here. I think probably appropriate to ask councillor Here to respond to that in writing, perhaps? Are people happy with that? Yep, great. Thank you very much. Right. I thought that went quite well for the first time of doing that. Right, ten appointments. Does councillor agree the appointments I set out? Great, thank you very much. Now we move on to motions, and the first one is the first emergency notice of motion Black History Month. I call on councillor Irem Ali to move this motion to be seconded by councillor Samad.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It is both an honour and a privilege to stand before you as we celebrate Black History Month this year. This is a time to reflect, to remember and to recognise the countless contributions, achievements and resilience of black individuals and communities, not just across Britain but around the world. Black History Month presents an opportunity for us all to pause and consider the journeys, stories and sacrifices that have paved the way of progress and justice. It is a chance to honour the trailblazers, the campaigners for civil rights, the artists who have shaped culture, the inventors, educators and everyday heroes whose legacies have enriched our society. Let us remember figures such as Mary Seacole and Aludwa Aquino, whose voices echo through history, reminding us of the courage it takes to challenge injustice and the power of compassion in building bridges between communities. Let us not forget those closer to home, those who stood up against discrimination in our own cities, in Dublin, London, Manchester and Belfast, helping to make our workplaces, schools and streets more inclusive and welcoming for all. And most of all, our dear Newcastle, that has come together numerous times against those that seek to divide and discriminate. However, Black History Month is not merely about looking back, it is also about looking forward. In our communities, our schools, our workplaces and our homes, we must ask, what can we do to promote understanding? How can we become better allies? It is in the daily acts of kindness, respect and It is in the daily acts of kindness, respect and solidarity that true change can take place. Whether through education, advocacy or simply listening to the stories of others, each of us has a part to play in shaping a future where every person is valued, together with their history and every contribution is recognised. As we come together to honour Black History Month, let us do so with gratitude for those who come before, determination to drive change today and hope for the generations yet to come. May we carry forward the stories, the struggles and the triumphs, never forgetting that black history is British history and woven into the very fabric of who we are. I move the motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Ali. Councillor Samad?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Council, as we commemorate Black History Month this October, we recognise that this is more than just a calendar date, it is a vital moment for reflection, education and action. This month is an essential reminder that black history is not separate from British history, it is a profound and foundational part of our national story, with countless contributions and experiences that deserve to be celebrated, understood and honoured. For us, here at the council, this commemoration is tied directly to our commitment to making Newcastle a truly equitable city. We have resolved to do more than just communicate, we are committing to concrete, sustained change. This Black History Month, let us move beyond passive acknowledgement, let us use this time to educate ourselves, challenge our perspectives and hold ourselves accountable to the resolutions we have made. Our commitment starts now, but our efforts to create an anti-racist, inclusive Newcastle will be all year round. Lord Mayor, I'm happy to second this motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Samad. Call on our next speaker councillor Kilgare, please, and can councillor Ashby please stand ready?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As we've heard, today marks the beginning of Black History Month, an important period in the calendar that gives us an opportunity to reflect on the immeasurable contributions black people have made to our city and society in general, to celebrate the past and ongoing contributions people of colour have made, be it in medicine, in sport, politics, culture and countless other fields. It's also about educating, perhaps now more than ever, about the challenges and discrimination that black people and other minorities have faced and inexplicably continue to face, and demonstrating that in our united city. People of colour, like people of all ethnicities, races, religions and backgrounds of any type, are part of the fabric that makes Newcastle the special city it is. Black people have made and continue to make differences to our lives and in our world that many of us take for granted, from Shaka Hislop keeping goal at the Gallagher End and going on to help establish show racism the red card because of the experiences he personally endured on the football pitch and in the city, to the medical pioneer Dr Irene Ikodaro, who became the first woman from Sierra Leone to qualify as a doctor, doing so right here in our city. Just two examples of black people intrinsically linked to our city, doing extraordinary things for the betterment of others. As proud allies, it has been our recent privilege to recognise both of these individuals, Shaka with the honorary freedom of Newcastle and Dr Irene, who last year became the first black woman to be recognised with an honorary plaque in our city. And allyship is as important as it ever was in this current political environment, because solidarity helps challenge systemic racism, it helps amplify marginalised voices and it helps to create a more just and equitable society. No one should ever face discrimination because of the colour of their skin, and yet, people of colour, in addition to many others, continue to face prejudice, discrimination and abuse every day. Newcastle has demonstrated time and again that it will stand up to such abhorrent behaviours, we only need to look back to the weekend to see that. But still, this cannot be allowed to continue unchallenged. I am determined that we will deliver an inclusive city with effective services that meet the needs of all of our residents. That is and always will be my unwavering commitment. This Black History Month, I would urge all members to recognise the contributions of black people to our city and beyond, to recognise the challenges and barriers people continue to face and how we can work together to tear them down, and it's my privilege to support this motion tonight. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Kilgare. Can councillor Nabila Ali please stand by? Councillor Ashby, please?
Thank you councillor Ali for introducing this motion. I was pleased to hear your speech at the Pakistan Independence Day celebrations, especially in respect to the place of women in politics. Lord Mayor, 1.4 million soldiers and labourers volunteered to join the British Indian Army during the Great War. More than 60,000 died from the countries comprising British India, including Pakistan, India and Bangladesh. The Indian Army fought against the German Empire on the Western Front in Egypt, Gallipoli, Germany, East Africa, and nearly 700,000 served in Mesopotamia against the Ottoman Empire. In March 1915, the army gave gallant service at the Battle of Nürthapelle with over 4,200 dead. The Nürthapelle Indian Memorial in northern France commemorates the 4,700 Indian soldiers and labourers who died on the Western Front during World War One who have no known graves. I had the privilege of visiting it with a government minister a decade ago, laying wreaths and bowing our heads to one of the sacrifices made by men from the subcontinent during the battle and the war. The British Indian Army earned 18 Victoria Crosses during the First World War, with the first two awarded to Sipoy Kudard Khan and Nike Darwan Singh Nagy in 1914 for their valor on the Western Front. Sipoy Khan served with 129th Duke of Connellst owned Balukis, when in the first couple of months, he was in Europe. He earned the awards bravely at Holbecker in Belgium on October 31st 1914. Despite being wounded and the sole survivor of his gun detachment, Khan continued to operate his machine gun until it was silenced by invaluable time for reinforcements to arrive. His VC was presented to him by the King Emperor while he was convalescing in Brighton from the wounds he received. He lived to see the formation for Pakistan Army on independence. The Indian Army began World War Two in 1939 under 200,000 strong. By the end of the war, it had become the largest volunteer army in history, over two and a half million, surpassing the record it set in the Great War. It was instrumental in saving India from Japanese invasion and as part of the Eighth Army liberating Burma. About 88,000 lost their lives globally and 30 VCs were one in action. We commemorated that on Vijay Day 80, just outside the civic centre. Field Marshal Lord Ronald Conleck was later to say that Britain could not have won both world wars without the British Indian Army, which I reiterate, were all volunteers. To all the citizens of South Asian heritage in Newcastle, I say, thank you for the service of your ancestors, be proud of it. If the call comes to defend Britain, I have little doubt you will respond. But could I also ask you to consider volunteering for armed forces and reserves now? As Kitchener said on posters everywhere during the Great War, your country needs you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Roman, please stand ready. Councillor Nabila Ali?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Commemorating Black History Month has always been very important, but with the growing reform movement, it has become more crucial than ever. We have white immigrants in the UK, but they are not linked with a burden on economy, draining resources or taking jobs away. Only we, non-white immigrants, are associated with these claims. We celebrate Black History Month to recognise and appreciate contribution of black people to British society. I want to start with the first black people who came to UK with the Romans in the third century, just 200 years before the English people first emerged from the land of the UK, due to mass migration, Jemni tribes. I'm sure that, up to this point, Reform UK leader would have had no issues with immigrants. Secondly, I will focus on Windrush generation, who were mainly black and contributed to rebuilding UK's infrastructure and services. Again, I'm sure Reform UK's leader wouldn't want their country back just after World War Two. Today, our country is a world-class champion in services, science and technology, built on the foundation contributed by black people. Immigrants in this country are vital part of society, they are not burden on you. I wonder if we take away immigrant's chant from the Reform UK's movement, what will be left in the hands of Nigel Farage? Nothing to do politics in this country. He has started his politics, he is building his politics upon us, upon immigrants. A leader's role is to speak truth, to engage public, whereas a performance role is to engage public by creating illusions. Is this not an illusion, that he tells the public, stopping immigrants automatically will solve all the issues faced by British people? In the end, I want to say, immigrants are not only part of British society, but they are part and parcel of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Ali. Councillor Roman?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I thank councillor Ali and councillor Samad for bringing this motion, fully support this, and it's fantastic to see two black front bench councillors bringing such a wonderful motion. In particular, I'm looking at the pledges you are asking the council to make, and in particular, reference three and four, which I like in particular. The council leader referenced the blue plaque, the highest recognition this city can bestow on one of our citizens for their exceptional contribution. Council, well known that there are only three black people who have been honoured with this recognition, and one Muslim in late Ahput Kuthub, who was the city's first black Muslim councillor here, along with Frederick Douglass, Jack London and Irene, as the leader has touched on. Perhaps that's an indication, Lord Mayor, council, that here in Newcastle, we have only four people of colour who have been recognised with the blue plaque, and that is something that we need to address going forward. Here in this institution, this civic, we need to look at some of the names that are etched in each of the rooms, how many of those reflect people of black minority ethnic heritage? And of course, not too long ago, it was an oversight, perhaps, the naming of the Archies' Reception carrying six women, not a single woman of colour. And if I'm brutally honest, as I always am, I look at this chamber and I see not enough black minority people represented across all of the parties, and those are some of the pledges that we need to make and commitment that we need to take to really demonstrate to this city that we are a city proud of our diversity. Once again, can I thank those colleagues for bringing this motion, fully support this. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Roman. I actually unveiled two of those plaques you're talking about. Right, I now call on councillor Irem Ali to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for your very absolutely excellent contributions. Councillor Ali, I completely agree with what you're saying, and some of the images that we've seen from London's demonstration were people wearing the flag of St George but then going to have an onion baji for a break. And what I found particularly interesting about that is that South Indian cuisine has become part of British cuisine, and often, we don't even think about the differences. Councillor Roman, I will certainly take you up on your proposal regarding the blue plaques, and I agree that there should be more recognition of black people in Newcastle and their contributions. In the council, I want to sum up by saying that we've made some great strides regarding EDI, Lord Mayor. We introduced the Race Charter, which is embedded into the newly-created EDI board, chaired by the chief exec as the head of paid service. We've increased racial diversity of our members, as you can see in the chamber, but also our staff from a long static position of 4% to 6. We've reactivated the Black Staff Forum and celebrated numerous events promoting racial equality. We've delivered the Newcastle Bridge Builders Programme, with a Next Steps event coming very soon, and I would just like to thank everyone who has made great contributions to diversity and equality in the city. May we all stand united. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Ali. Is the motion agreed? Thank you very much, council. Move on to the next emergency motion. Can I call on councillor Mark Mitchell to move it, to be seconded by councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll start with a couple of points of clarification, which I'm sure you're aware of. First of all, the six-month rule, of course, does not apply if more than 15 members of council wish to bring an item back, and I suspect this is an issue that we'll be speaking on again fairly soon. In addition, the government did publish specific proposals on the 26th of September, rushing them out on a Friday afternoon as normal, so that they get minimal press coverage. Last Saturday, many in this chamber and across Newcastle came together to protest against the far-right, to protect the rights of residents of this city and to stand up for those who cannot or who are afraid to speak for themselves. Newcastle responded to hate, to fear mongering and lies, as we should. Also last week, Labour Government rolled out plans for digital ID. We on this side of the chamber stand full-scale against this measure, because it is wrong for the UK, it is wrong for Newcastle as a city of sanctuary, because it was wrong in 2006, it is wrong now and it will continue to be wrong in the future. So why is it wrong? It is wrong because compulsory ID cards and compulsory ID are the tools of totalitarians across the world used to oppress, control and track their citizens. It is wrong because law-abiding people in the UK have managed to go about their business for 73 years without compulsory ID. It is wrong because the government should not be asking businesses and landlords to apply immigration laws. It is wrong because my 83-year-old mother should not be forced to deal with a digital ID, that those who cannot afford to or do not have a phone should not be left disadvantaged. It is wrong because Keir Starmer wants to make every single person in this chamber and across Newcastle to have a digital ID, because he and his ministers cannot get to grips with creating an immigration system that is fit for purpose. But it is also wrong because it will not work, and it will serve only to drive some of the most disadvantaged people in our country further into exploitation and fear. This is not a proportionate, reasonable and workable solution to a problem, it is Keir Starmer reaching back to one of Tony Blair's failed ideas because he has none of his own. One of the most chilling phrases that can be used by a government to oppress its own citizens is papers please. The demonstration that government controls who you are, where you go and what you do. The one thing that we can guarantee about digital ID, just as we are seeing with ICE enforcement across the USA right now as we speak, is that it is not the white, middle-class people with an English accent like me who will be asked for it, it will be minorities who will be questioned and harassed because of this measure. Over the last few years, the Labour Government, correctly, with our full agreement and understanding, complained vociferously about Tory measures requiring voter ID. And yet, now, here they are with their own ID scheme, which is just as unnecessary, which will disproportionately impact certain parts of society, and which is complete government overreach. And yes, I've read the proposals, and the government talks about how they will protect us and how this is, there's nothing to see here, but frankly, I do not want to see all my data, and I'm sure you don't want to see all your data, on one big government database out of the control of either this Labour Government or of a future Conservative or Reform government. We already have measures around employment, like we all have a national insurance number, but this measure, among other things, will do nothing to stop things like food delivery drivers who are already being exploited. drivers who are already being exploited and paid cash in hand from being further exploited, because now there will be yet another government proposal that will oppress them. So I urge you to support this motion, set out our clear position in Newcastle, and make it clear that we will neither support nor cooperate with this illiberal proposal.
Thank you councillor Mitchell. Councillor Ferguson?
Second, councillor Wright.
Okay, thank you very much. Can councillor Ashby please stand ready? I now call on councillor Powers, please.
I actually forgot I was speaking for a second. I think, to be fair, most of my comments that I was going to make, I think you perfectly summed up well in your opening remarks on the necessity to bring this motion forward and the urgency. Given that there is very limited amount of information that is out there on what the scheme will look like, how it will be operated, there is also a commitment, obviously, to a full governmental paper, governmental scrutiny, consultation process that will come about. I do feel that bringing this motion forward, and particularly the word that is used, is based nothing on fearmongering and projection and hearsay and rumours, that there's no benefits to the people of our city to pass a motion that puts out that type of messages to residents. We should be putting out messages that are based on facts, based on an understanding of exactly what the proposals are, and be able to give legitimate responses to what those proposals look like. I think a motion that has encountered could about five times in it isn't a motion that I think we should be supporting as a council, because, excuse me, what sort of motions do we start bringing before, next time do we start bringing ones based on it and their conspiracy theories, just because things could happen? I urge council to reject this motion, not in the sense that we should never discuss it, but we should discuss it in a properly timely manner, and when we have all the full facts available, and actually understand fully what this would look like. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Powers. Councillor Ashby?
Now, Lord Mayor, to paraphrase Benjamin Franklin, those who would give up liberty for safety deserve neither. I agree with every word spoken by councillor Mark Mitchell. If he hadn't said them, I would have. At the moment, there's a sad joke going around, Labour wants you to have an ID card to control you because it can't control our borders. It's a gift to Reform UK, or as I call them, ruin UK. After several million people have signed, already several million people have signed a petition to Parliament opposing them. If the Labour Government proposes this suppression of our ancient liberties, I make several predictions. One, the technology will be late, way over budget and won't work properly. Remember the e-borders fiasco? Remember the Fujitsu post office scandal? Two, the scheme will suffer from overreach. Already, Labour ministers are adding to the tasks it proposes. They praise the Estonian scheme. There you have to produce your ID card to get an appointment with a GP. What else will an officious government try to impose? Three, the scheme will fail in its alleged purpose of stopping illegal migration and illegal working. This is the most absurd reason I've heard. Does anybody really believe that those who are using illegal workers will take a bit of notice of this requirement? The clue is in the illegal. Already, they ignore tax and health and safety. Four, ID cards will undoubtedly be used to demand papers please. You get one guess who will be differentially targeted. This gives a weapon to those who want the SASS laws renewed. Five, older people, the digitally excluded and others like me, will feel additional anxiety that they don't have a mobile or they'll forget their phone. This is an unacceptable imposition. Lord Mayor, I shall fight against this proposal, called previously a solution looking for a problem. As I have previously done, I support the motion.
Thank you very much councillor Ashby. Councillor Ferguson, you reserve the right to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for permitting this debate to be taken this evening. Why is it, in this day and age, that we might find any strident opposition to digital ID cards? I'm on record previously expressing concern about the vast quantity of data that we all willingly hand over to corporate entities, particularly online, for them to do with as they please in order to access their services, often for free. The answer is simple. Whether we should or not, we choose to. A government-mandated digital ID scheme is self-evidently different. We don't have a choice there. Yes, we might find it difficult or impossible to do various things without certain forms of government-sanctioned ID, but we ultimately have a choice whether we have a passport, a driving licence or whatever. A universal digital ID leaves no such choice. I understand some of the arguments in favour, particularly around joined-up government services. However, to councillor Ashby's point, we have to balance that against the risks of such a system being abused, exploited or exposed. And I don't buy the idea that this will do anything on the shadow economy. All those businesses are already under a legal obligation to undertake right-to-work checks, and that hasn't made a jot of difference. It is not beyond the realms of imagination to foresee a future totalitarian government, or even one with mild tendencies in that direction, seeing a fantastic opportunity to control, to quell dissent and to regulate citizen behaviour. Polling out today shows that since announcing the scheme, public support for some form of digital ID has cratered, falling from net plus 35% in the early summer to minus 14% now. The primary driver, dissatisfaction and lack of trust in the government. Doesn't that tell you all you need to know? We should give our rights away advisedly, carefully, cautiously, but only if we must, and preferably not at all. It shouldn't be dependent on our trust in the current government, because governments change. The website on gov.uk is there, it is public, councillor Mitchell is right. It tells us how it will work, what data will be held, what it will do, how it will make access to services easier, and anticipating concerns, how our data and privacy will be protected, and how it will be available to everyone. But even if you take councillor Powers' argument at face value, we know little, that we know little about the detail. Imagine how vulnerable people who could be negatively affected by this policy are feeling right now, unsure of what it might mean in practice. Those fleeing persecution, for example, who fear such an ID could be used to identify them by hostile actors. Lord Mayor, this was a bad idea 20 years ago. It's a bad idea now, and it should be consigned to the dustbin of history.
Thank you very much. I now call on councillor Mitchell to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll keep this short, but I will respond directly to councillor Powers. It's a defence we see all too often from government. Oh, don't worry about the principle, wait till you see the detail, that will be fine. Well, I'm sorry, that is not the answer, because the detail is not what matters here. It is the principle. The principle is that we have not had compulsory ID in this country since 1952, we do not need it now, and the people who will suffer from it are already suffering from it, from the principle, the discussion and the debate that is happening. And your attempts to justify it, and the Home Secretary's attempts to justify it, and the Prime Minister's attempts to justify it, just make those people more and more scared. The fact is, this is a bad proposal that is reaching back into the past rather than dealing with the current issues that must be addressed.
Thank you very much. Is the motion agreed? Okay. Right, everybody who has managed to vote electronically, those of you who haven't managed to vote electronically, those in favour of the motion, can you please put your hands up, please? Those against the motion, can you please put your hands up? Thank you very much. Any abstentions, please indicate. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, so that was 27, 4 and 30 against. So now we move on to item 11, another notice of motion, support for people dying in poverty. I'll call on councillor Walker to move this motion, to be seconded by councillor Austin. Councillor Walker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. First off, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to councillor Free, who originally put this motion together and has put a lot of the work into it, alongside Marie Curie Hospice for their campaigning on this issue. I think it's a really important issue, and I'm also really glad and really grateful for the consensus that is across the chamber, and once again shows, I think, if within politics we sometimes get, and local politicians, national politicians often get a bad rep for a lot of things, however, I think this tonight, and this motion tonight, shows how politics can be a force for good, and how it can be something that is a real driver for change, and how we can work across party, across all colours, and shows us in the best light, and shows us what we can do. Terminal illness is something that is horrendous for everyone it touches, whether it's the person who's been diagnosed with that, or their family, or their loved ones or close friends. And it's bad enough that if you've been diagnosed with a terminal illness, to then have that added loss of income, additional financial needs that come with that around transport, energy costs, adapting to health needs. You should be allowed to take and make the most of the time that people have left, without the stress and the strain that that breeds onto people's families. In Newcastle, we do have some support, and we have comprehensive information, we have advice. Information Now is a fantastic tool that is available for all residents within Newcastle, and I encourage all members to promote that and tell everybody around that as well. Adult Social Care has support for people with terminal illness, which focuses on their personal wishes, their preferences. And we work in partnership with the Community Palette of care teams as well. We also, within the city, have an importance, and a lot of importance goes to unpaid carers who I think are often forgotten around, and this is a conversation I've had within my portfolio for a long time, and we've discussed in this chamber, and last year we brought the All Age Carer Strategy to council. So our carer centre offer a range of services for unpaid carers, and which includes respite, emotional support, information advice as well as financial advice as well. We also do offer financial support in the city. Currently, council support provides support to people struggling, however, that is only once the financial difficulty is set in. We should be much more preventive than that, and it should be better that we're preventive than that, and specify terminal illness within our policies and processes. We're working with officers within the city to integrate this within to our CTRS for consultation next year. But we also need to work closely with NHS partners and the Department for Work and Pensions to do this. We need to have support to be made more automatic. We are working very closely within the council around digital and digitalisation of services, and we talked about digital ID before, and this is where digital ID in particular, and digital services are very good, where we can have things that go across party, across divisions, across services, when NHS, when local authorities, when the Department for Work and Pensions, when all of that information is at hand and is readily available, where someone who is dying, who has enough on their plate, at least let's remove some of that administration burden, let's do things automatically, let's get that support there for people. And I think that, as what we can do in this city, and what this motion is hopefully going to start to do, is to take that burden away. And on that note, I'll hand over to councillor Austin. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Walker.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thanks to other councillors, that several months ago, when we first put this motion in, also put similar motions in, so thank you for working collaboratively with that. And I'm proud to second this important cross-party motion on behalf of the Liberal Democrats. No one should face their final days in poverty. In Newcastle, it is quite concerning that it is higher than the national average. And the research set out in the motion tells us that nearly 4 in 10 working age terminally ill people in our city face dying in poverty. Many of them struggle to heat their homes due to rising energy bills, and they struggle to afford the basic care or maintain a dignified life. And the research antecedents in this motion are not just numbers, there are families across our city who... Sorry, I've completely lost what I was saying there. And we as Liberal Democrats have been clear that dying and that dignity and dying must be dependent by dignity and living, and our party has called for better support for carers and families affected by terminal illnesses, and a more compassionate welfare system. We've pushed for fairer access to benefits, like special rule for end-of-life, so that people don't have to jump through the hoops for support when they are the most vulnerable. And we also know that women and minority ethnic groups and disabled people are more likely to face poverty at the end of their life. And let's be clear that this motion isn't about party politics, it's about basic humanity. It is saying that the people in, it's about saying to the people in our city that we have them, we see you, and we will not let you face dying in poverty. And I hope everybody in this chamber supports this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Austin. And now move on to the debate. Councillor Chisholm, you're first.
I will bring the Lord Mayor councillor, this is going to be my notice for me, is that okay?
Yep, fine.
I'm very pleased that we brought forward this motion. My involvement goes back to a health scrutiny committee, where Sir Oswalds and Marie Curie gave a very impressive report on their work. This motion comes from a model circulated by Marie Curie, and I think it's important that we pass it. The motion makes important points about the end-of-life care, but I would commend the reports that these organisations gave to members. I've circulated them today to some members and officers. There is more to learn from these organisations, they have data and insights into services that are working well and where things need to change. It's important that we listen to them, and after we pass this motion, we need to keep working with them. As we've heard, the key insight they have is that there are many people in Newcastle with a terminal diagnosis who don't get the best help they could. We know that some people at the end of their life don't get the wraparound emotional and practical support they need before the health crisis drives them into an emergency hospital admission. Some of the actions the motion calls for involve using the council's limited powers in the benefits system. When somebody receives a terminal diagnosis, a doctor usually issues an SR1 form. As soon as an SR1 form is issued, I want people to be entitled to help with their council tax. I would like the person's liability to stop at that point. I also want to see the council making full use of its Section 13A powers. 13A powers. Newcastle City Council has quite a good record of using these powers to write off council debt in extraordinary situations, better than some of the councils in the region. It should be a matter of routine that people get this, when people get this diagnosis, their council tax debt, debt stops building up, and we automatically consider deleting any arrears. This will ensure that people who live with a terminal illness and their family members are not threatened with a bailiff visit or council tax collection. Financial pressures have often been building up for long before a diagnosis arrives. So by the time the doctor gives the bad news, people's work and family lives have already been disrupted by illness. I'm pleased to say that the government is reviewing the rules on council tax, and I hope that England will soon catch up with Wales and stop threatening people with prison when they're behind with a domestic bill. In the short term, I hope to see the system reformed so that one mispayment and a reminder is no longer enough to call in a whole year's bill and threaten the use of bailiffs and other aggressive enforcement. The Health Screening Committee, St Oswald's challenge, challenged us to have an open conversation about debt. I hope we will take that request seriously. I've today written to community organisations, sharing the motion with them, and asked them for a conversation about the steps we can take in our communities. During people's last weeks and months of life in Newcastle, the inequalities that many already suffered often get worse. We know that the need for hospice and end-of-life services is going up, and will continue to do so. It's up to us to make the changes the motion asks for, and then do more to make sure we really understand what this means for us, our residents, and our services. The challenge has been laid down, let's pick it up, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can councillor Ira Mally please stand by? Councillor Hartley?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you to Marie Curie for all their work campaigning on this issue. It was a pleasure to meet with their campaign team at their event in Biker earlier in the year. As someone who is proud to work as a psychologist in palliative care, I'm really glad we're bringing this issue to council cross-party, and I echo the words of councillor Walker and councillor Austin on that matter absolutely. Dame Cicely Saunders, the nurse, social worker, and doctor who was instrumental in the beginnings of the hospice movement, spoke about how the role of palliative care is not just to help people die peacefully, but also to help people live fully, right up until the end of their lives. I would not be an elected councillor had it not been for the lesson in values and strength I have taken from working with people living with terminal disease. To put it simply, life is short, and knowing that can help us focus on what matters, what's important. We have two excellent hospices in Marie Curie and St Oswald's in Newcastle, hospices that rely on charitable funding, receiving just 30% of their total costs from government. Hospice UK have shown that one in four people who could benefit from palliative care do not receive appropriate support, identifying people living in poverty, as was said earlier, as one of those groups who are underserved. As I say, palliative care is about helping people live fully, right up until the end of their lives. We cannot do this unless we address the material problems they face. In the last financial year, Newcastle's Welfare Rights Service helped 7,500 Newcastle residents access unclaimed financial support that totaled £14.5 million. We live in the North East, underserved compared to the rest of the country. Welfare rights do such important work in pushing back this inequality and securing the money owed to residents. And I also want to highlight how patients living with diseases other than cancer, but with a terminal diagnosis, are also underserved compared to those with cancer diagnoses. People living with lung disease, COPD, heart failure, those with progressive neurological conditions. And I would ask that the council looks to identify ways of providing information support, council tax relief, access to the special rules, SR1 forms, blue badges, and hardship funds for those who fall through the gaps because of this inequity. Support for those with terminal disease is of course just as important for those with and without a cancer diagnosis. Through ramping up the way, as a council, we can provide financial support, we can go further in helping those who are dying to live the best life they can, right up until the end. We Greens fully support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hartley. Can councillor Taylor please stand by? Councillor Ira Mally?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really welcome this motion tonight, Lord Mayor. Poverty, as you'll know, is a challenge faced by millions, but its burden is not distributed equally. Women, especially single mothers and those from marginalised backgrounds, are more likely to live in poverty than men. They are often paid less for the same work, are overrepresented in low-wage and insecure jobs, and frequently bear the brunt of unpaid care responsibilities. These factors combine to create cycles of hardship that can be incredibly difficult to break. Similarly, black communities face higher rates of poverty due to longstanding barriers rooted in discrimination and social exclusion. From restricted access to quality education and employment opportunities, to disparities in housing and healthcare, the deck has been stacked against black individuals and families for generations. It is crucial, therefore, to recognise that for black women, these challenges are compounded. They may face both gender and racial discrimination simultaneously, making it even harder to escape the grip of poverty. This intersectionality highlights why our efforts to address poverty must always be sensitive to the multiple and interlocking forms of disadvantage. To be told one is terminally ill is a devastating blow, but imagine facing this reality without the security of a warm, safe place to stay, without access to adequate healthcare, and all too often, without the comfort of friends or family nearby. For far too many, this is not hypothetical, it is their lived experience. They must endure not only physical decline, but also the constant worry of where their next meal would come from, how to keep the lights on, or even how to afford their medications. Poverty and illness feed into each other. Chronic deprivation can make people more susceptible to disease, and illness can push families further into destitution. Those with terminal diagnoses may find themselves unable to work, with social supports often stretched thin or difficult to access. The result is that they spend their final days in distress and in dignity, deny the basic comforts that many of us take for granted. Every person, regardless of income, should have the right to die with dignity. This means access to pain relief, compassionate care, and the opportunity to spend their last days in peace, surrounded by love and respect. So I absolutely welcome the asks from this motion, because it commits us to proactively look for ways in which we can support households where someone is living with a terminal illness, and look forward to the findings, Lord Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Mally. Can councillor Kilgaw please stand ready? Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As most colleagues will know, I spent around 40 years of my life treating patients with cancer and looking after those with terminal illness and trying to do my best for them. A few months ago, councillor Frewe, councillor Hartley and myself all visited Marie Curie at their shop in Biker. I think we all came to the same conclusion that this was an important issue to bring to council. So I'm delighted to support this excellent motion, and I am pleased it has cross-party support. And when I talked to the Marie Curie staff, I really was horrified to find out how many terminally ill people are dying in poverty, and I think it's entirely and completely unacceptable. And as councillor Austin said, it seems that in Newcastle, the percentage of people dying in poverty is higher than the national average. So what can the council do? Well, we need to review our policies and make sure we have a clear statement of what support the council can give to terminally ill residents and their carers, and what support is available for the voluntary sector and local communities. We also need to work with our NHS partners to make sure we identify everyone who needs support, and where appropriate, include them in the Health Through Warmth Programme, so that no one who is terminally ill has to suffer living in a house that isn't warm enough. Currently, the Terminally Ill Adult End-of-Life Bill is being debated in the House of Laws. And if it becomes law, then it is essential that people have a genuine choice and are not making their decisions due to poverty, difficulty fitting in their homes, or lack of high-quality hospice and terminal care. Although not part of this motion, the lack of sustainable funding for our hospices is a disgrace, and we need to put pressure on the government to make sure the necessary funding is available across the UK. I have never understood why hospices are outside the NHS and have to rely so much on charitable funding. I hope this will change as more and more people need the excellent services Marie Curie and others provide. Lord Mayor, I'd like to thank Marie Curie for bringing the issue of dying in poverty to our attention, and I hope this motion will receive unanimous support.
Thank you very much. Councillor Kilgaw?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the cross-party contributions tonight on such an important and emotive issue. This motion speaks to the heart of who we are as a city and as a council. It's about dignity, compassion, and tackling poverty head-on. Terminal illness is unimaginably difficult for any household, but for too many, it also brings financial hardship. According to the latest report by Marie Curie, as we've heard, terminal illness can cause a significant reduction in household income, making the unbearable impossible. The final months of someone's life should be a time to focus on what matters most, spending time with loved ones, finding comfort, and living as well as possible. In Newcastle, we have a strong foundation to support the most vulnerable in our communities. We are a Mormon city committed to tackling health inequalities, and we're proud of our social care and healthcare professionals and the compassion that runs through the whole city. But we cannot ignore the reality facing too many of our residents. As councillor Austin alluded to, more than one in six people who die each year in the UK die in poverty. In the North East, 34% of working-age people dying in poverty, and here in Newcastle, nearly 40% of working-age people with a terminal illness are dying in poverty. This is simply unacceptable. We must do more, and we can do more, to ensure nobody dies in poverty. And that means working closely with our partner agencies and making sure our financial support systems are fit for purpose. We need to review tools like discretionary housing payments and the Household Support Fund, and look again at how our council tax reduction scheme can better support those facing terminal illness. These figures demand a collective response. As a council, we have the opportunity to work together across-party divides, cross-directorates, and with our partners to improve the support available to people at the end of life. By backing this motion, we reaffirm our commitment to dignity, fairness, and care for every resident, especially those facing the most difficult circumstances. I'm glad we've been able to bring this motion to council tonight. I'm glad for the cross-party support, and I thank councillor Frewe for his work that got us to this point. And I'm very happy to support the motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much councillor Kilgaw. I call on councillor Walker to reply.
Sorry, I didn't anticipate having to get back up at that exact moment. I'm going to keep this very brief. One of the things that I'm most proud of is when we, as a full chamber, come together in moments like this. And one of the reasons that I got involved in politics in the first place was to do things that actually benefited the residents of the city and of the country as a whole on that. And just something that will be an unusual thing for to come out of my mouth and anyone in this chamber, I think, is I agree with everything that's been said, actually, across the chamber tonight. And it's so nice to have that cross-party work. And I wanted to, just from my point of view, from my portfolio going forward, is just to say that hopefully we can continue that, and I will work and operate as much and work across the chamber and across it where we can moving forward too, and just urge all colleagues to support the motion tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Walker. Is the motion agreed? Very much, council. Item 12, notice of motion, improving council services. Yes?
I would like to request that we have a partial extension of the guillotine this evening.
Okay.
So that we may discuss up to and including item 13 on the agenda.
Right. So when item 13 is over, the guillotine will fall, assuming we're past 8.30 at that time. Is that agreed? Agreed, yeah. Thank you very much. Right. Sorry, I didn't mean to swear. Anyway, and I call on councillor Mark Mitchell to move this motion to be seconded by councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Around the beginning of September, one of my residents contacted the council to ask for a fridge to be removed, a service the council offers. That resident was told that it would take six weeks for that fridge to be collected. And when she said, well, what am I meant to do for those six weeks? Oh, just leave it outside. It takes eight weeks still to get an appointment for a pest control officer to come. And there are too many services in this city which are being allowed to erode, where there is insufficient focus on service levels, and where residents do not feel confident that they can rely on the city. And before the leader of the council starts having a go at me, I am not denigrating the city, and I am also not denigrating our council officers, who do a great job with what they have. But I am complaining about the fact that our cabinet will not focus on service delivery and how we make things better in this city, how we do the basic job of cleaning up the city. Things like when residents ask for a litter bin about outside the gate of a park so people can put their dog bags in it, that a bin can be put there, rather than it being a huge issue over a single bin. We are not focused as a council on how we do things better for residents. We are not focused on how we actually improve their lives. And that is why, day in, day out, all of our inboxes are full of complaints about back lanes, alleys, pavements, parking, and so on, because the basics are not being looked at, and we're not seeing how we can improve service. So what I have done tonight is I've brought forward this motion, and to deal with one specific issue which has been going on all summer. Last summer was all about grass cutting, and I will acknowledge and thank the administration for the work that was done on grass cutting, because we have seen the improvements. But now we're in a position where the state weeds across the city is a constant issue that residents are bringing to the fore. And the thing about this is, it is not a huge issue. It is not a huge expense. It is not something that makes a huge difference. But when people walk down the street and they see weeds growing all across the pavement, they see that sends a message about what kind of city we have. There is an amendment to this motion. I will say of the amendment that you can choose to delete what residents think about online services, but that will not make the issue go away. You can use your amendment to boast about what you're doing, but it will not convince the lady who couldn't get her washing machine taken away for six weeks that things are getting better. So frankly, rather than the administration moving amendments that attack motions from the opposition, I suspect you actually try to get a bit better at doing your job and listening to what residents say. So, as I've said, this is one specific issue that we've highlighted. It is an issue that residents care about and want to see action on. And I hope that the cabinet will take this forward at speed and make sure that next summer, Newcastle isn't overrun by weeds again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Stone, second?
I second and reserve the right to speak, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Stone. As has been alluded to, we have an amendment. Can I call on councillor Powers to move the amendment, being seconded by councillor Barry Stanners?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm moving the amendment, and also oppose the original Liberal Democrat wording in the motion. The Liberal Democrat motion paints a picture of services in decline and an administration that doesn't care about quality. That's simply not true. And the fact is, it's fundamentally unfair on the thousands of staff who keep our city running every single day. Let us start with the reality. Since 2012-13, local services and waste have had to deliver £14.3 million in budget reductions. Staff numbers in refuse collection, street cleaning, and grounds maintenance have reduced from over 500 to just over 300, around a 40% reduction. The scale of austerity we have faced, and these cuts were not made in Newcastle, they were made in Westminster, starting with the Lib Dem Conservative Coalition, and continued by successive Conservative glomms. Despite that, the service is still performing above grease standards when it comes to tackling litter, removing flytipping, and actually to correct the council's points... litter, removing fly tipping, and actually to correct the council's points, bulky waste collection is around three to four weeks because it's high demand and it's highly competitively priced compared with the services, and pest control times, again, high demand because it's below cost for most other private operators, is around one week. That's not spin, that's evidence from performance monitoring. Even with the decade of cuts, and our teams are doing more with fewer people and fewer resources and still delivering a service that the public can rely on, that's why I can't support the Lib Dem motion. It refuses to acknowledge the context of national cuts, talks down the very staff who are working flat-out hard on our streets. It claims there's regularly dissatisfaction with frontline services when all the evidence shows that it's performing strong, that complaints are not widespread, and that residents themselves can see the difference we're making when we invest, because we are investing. We saw just this year we committed 1.7 million to neighbourhood improvements, enhanced grass cutting, better weed control, more graffiti cleanup, and even everyone's favourite, we even bought a chewing gum machine. And we have a team there to staff it. We have invested in additional teams, we have tried new weed control methods to reduce chemical use and protect biodiversity. These are not actions of a council that indifferent to quality, they are actions of a council committed to continuous improvement. Of course, our residents are right to expect clean neighbourhoods, safe pavements, timely pest control, affordable bulky waste collection, and we will continue to strive for that. But the way we do it is not to indulge in opposition political rhetoric, it's to build on the investment we're already making, it's to support our staff, and it's to commit to an action plan that tackles the challenges head-on. That's what our amendment tries to do. It keeps the original action points, but it's balanced, it's fair, and it sets out a clear course: continue to invest, continue to improve, continue to back our staff who deliver for Newcastle. Lord Mayor, I urge colleagues to reject the negative and misleading motion wording from the Liberal Democrats and instead support our amendment, constructive, practical plan to improve services for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Powers. Councillor Barry Stanners?
Yeah. So I'm here to second the amendment to the motion. The original motion is an absolute insult to the hard-working staff that we've got across the entire city, who do their very best to keep Newcastle a clean, green place to live. It's an insult to their work and dedication, and a slap in the face. The original motion also states, quote, "The administration has chosen to pursue a narrative based on the perceived pain of budget cuts" and called it "a narrative". It is not perceived, it is not a narrative. We have faced millions of pounds' worth of cuts from central government, from the last Tory government. In fact, between 2010 and 2015, when the party opposite who's brought this motion forward were in government, they cut around 150 million pounds from Newcastle. There's no wonder that our teams are struggling occasionally. Despite the cuts from the Tories and the Liberal Democrats, Newcastle has proudly kept services running and have utilised additional funding when we have received it to provide the maximum impact for residents. The hotspot funding we received in 2020-21 has allowed us to be more responsive and targeted in areas of concern. The investment in neighbourhood funding received in 22-23 provides additional focus on strimming, fence lines, roundabouts, and aerial routes. The Chewing Gum Task Force, which was voted for earlier this year and voted against by the party opposite, is helping remove the blight of chewing gum in the city. And the recent announcement of an additional 1.7 million pounds for ground maintenance. The party opposite is talking the city down once again. This party is delivering for the city.
Thank you very much. Can councillor Peters please stand ready? Councillor Maynes? Yes, please.
Sorry. Yes, I'd like to support the amended motion, which I do think is more balanced and fair, because I do dispute that quality is overlooked in our services and commend our officers for the services they provide and the improvements that they make for residents. I mean, most of the issues raised within the original amendment are things that do, you know, upset a lot of residents, such as fly tipping, litter, etc. They are an issue that we respond to, but the problem lies with people fly tipping and strewn rubbish all over, even with extra bins. Weeds have been a big topic, they've been a big topic for this year, because, yes, we've been trying new methods in terms of trying to get rid of them. I do believe that we are getting there, and so, you know, I agree with Stee, and I agree with the actions that are in the amendment, I just think that the amendment from our side is more fair, and I'd like staff to, colleagues, to support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Maynes. Will councillor Ferguson stand ready? Councillor Peters, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. If you go down any street in Newcastle and Dornoch, you will hear multiple reports of how dissatisfied local residents are with their community services. That is a legacy of chronic underfunding from central Westminster governments to local councils, and one that this current Labour administration has continued. That is not to disparage the incredible work of, that is not to disparage the incredible work of our council officers, who I only have good things to say about from my experiences with them. However, I want to focus on some positive things that we could do through this motion. We know from the work of lots of Green councillors and campaigners, and also work from councillors across this council, that there is incredible work happening by residents across our city to improve the state of our streets and our communities. The Biker Clean Streets campaign, the work that councillor Mr. Sheriff has been doing to remove fraudulent charity deposit boxes, the work that I've been supporting in South Jesmond, and I also know that there has been extensive work from the Keep Jasmine Clean campaign as well. Similar to the way that the council currently supports litter picking groups, I wonder if we could also have a similar approach to managing weeds as well, by providing weeding equipment for hand-weeding to gardening groups. This would also act to help reduce the use of glyphosate in our communities, which, by the WHO and the Global Glyphosate Study, are both recognised, even at levels considered safe by the EU and UK currently, to be likely human carcinogens, endocrine disruptors, and reproductive disruptors. They also affect our pets, including particularly dogs. I would therefore suggest that in looking at the quality that we are providing across the city, as well as supporting our current council workers, that we look at the quality of the goods and services that we are providing, that we also try and support those in our communities who are already doing hard work in voluntary capacities, and therefore we can use this process to support what is already going on. And I think that's all I have to say on that, so.
Thank you very much, councillor Peters. Can councillor Hay please stand ready? Councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I was actually going to waive my right to speak on this item, because I thought that councillor Mitchell had said all that really needed to be said on what I think was on the face of it, a totally reasonable argument, and one that many, many residents of this city would agree with, and we all know, those of us who are out in the doors speaking regularly to them, that is what they're telling us, and that's why we're talking about it tonight. But we hear the same old arguments time and time again, and so I felt like it was only right and proper to come up and address them. This is not folks about the workforce, this is not criticising the officers or the quality of the job that they do. That is an easy way to get out of a legitimate criticism of your political mindset about setting priorities for the city. Come on! We are listening to an argument here now that is over a decade old. "Oh, it was the coalition! You lot are in control in government now!", and yet the same financial pain affects local authorities still. Why don't you take some ownership of that? Yeah? Every single local authority in this country is in the same position, and yet the outcomes vary, which tells you all you need to know, that there are political choices that are being made about the tight public finances that we have. Councillor Mitchell spoke about the grass-cutting exercise that was undertaken last year, and we are so grateful to the officers and to all of the members and to Cabinet for engaging in that exercise, because we have seen improved outcomes, and that's welcome. But there was a recognition that the time, that the grass-cutting outcomes prior to that work were differential between here and North Tyneside, for example. That's not austerity, that's not the coalition government, it's political choices. And ultimately, at the end of the day, you can't have it both ways, because on the one hand, we're told, "No problem, nothing to see here, the quality's excellent, there can be no complaints whatsoever." And then yet we say, "Austerity and really difficult to deliver stuff, and it's so good that we've got 1.7 million pounds extra." If there's no problem with the service, wouldn't you put that 1.7 million pounds into something else? Or maybe that is a recognition implicitly that there is indeed a problem, and we do need to deal with it. The amendment waters things down. My personal experience is that I had a mattress that sat in my garage for six weeks to be collected, but I'm one of the lucky ones, because I've got a garage that I could put the mattress in until it went. But I'll leave the final observation to the resident that I spoke to not 10 days ago, who said to me, "Come out, don't stand at my door, come and look at this, that's not a weed, it's a tree."
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Hay?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The pain of budget cuts over recent years is not perceived, but is very real. Local services and waste teams have made budget reductions of nearly 14.3 million pounds since 2012-2013, averaging just over 1 million pounds per year. Over the 10-year period between 2013-14 to 2023-24, the service had to reduce its staff numbers on refuse collection, street cleansing, and grounds maintenance from 508 to 319 to help the council balance its budget. Reductions of this scale will inevitably have an impact on frontline services. However, it is important to recognise that the service is performing beyond the agreed service standards for tackling litter and removal of fly tipping. The recent story in The Chronicle highlighting the outstanding work done by our teams, only for the back lanes to be spoiled again within 24 hours, shows what the service is facing on a daily basis. Anyone can request an additional street litter bin or movement of existing bins as part of our annual litter bin review. During this review, we consider existing bins in the vicinity and how often they are used, far from refusal. Pest control appointments are approximately one week. As of the 30th of September, we could have booked a rat appointment for the 8th of October. Demand for pest control is always high because we provide an excellent service at a very competitive price compared to the private sector. The bulky waste collection service wait times are approximately three to six weeks, depending on the items selected. I could go on and on and on. Where we can, we have utilised any additional funding we have received to provide the maximum impact for residents. The hotspot funding we received in 2021 has allowed us to be more responsive and targeted in areas of concern. The investment in neighbourhood funding received in 22-23 provides additional focus on strimming fence lines, roundabouts, and arterial routes. Our citywide street weed control contract forms part of our routine maintenance programme. I will take forward councillor Peters' suggestion, and I will get back to her in due course. What I will say to close, recognising the time, is that this administration is listening to residents, it's listening to councillors from across the chamber who want to make fair and legitimate points. We are investing 1.7 million pounds to improve the city. We are investing 1.5 million pounds in place basis. We are investing 50 million pounds to reduce potholes and improve the state of our roads. We're taking the job of representing and leading this city seriously, we're not carping from the sidelines and talking down the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hay. Councillor Stone, you reserve the right to speak? You reserve the right to speak? Do you all have to?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you, I'm rising to support councillor Mitchell's motion. I'm happy to echo on behalf of the people of Manor Park in my area, the concerns and the complaints and the feedback we get consistently in terms of the weeds, in terms of the pavements, in terms of the removal of most of the litter bins in the ward by the party opposites. There is a big problem on customer service, I don't think for certainly the last, what we are now getting on, 14, 15 years we've had the party in control, there has not been adequate focus on quality of customer service. That has not been a priority for the administration opposite, and it is noticeable, it is very, very noticeable for people in my ward, because they pay a considerable amount of council tax that goes up every year, they see no improvement in standards of service, they see reduction after reduction after reduction, and for too many people and for too long in this city, the impression has been created by the party opposite that the council's interests are about delivering things in the interest of the council and not the interests of the citizens of Newcastle, and that will be a big difference when the party opposite is swept away in a matter of months and replaced by hopefully something better. I would add to my concerns on this, that there is an issue around transparency in this council. There has been an announcement in recent weeks, or recent days in fact, of extra pots of money have been found to deliver on some priorities. Well, that's good news, I always welcome more funding on services, but I see no clear plan for how that money is going to be spent, and no clear accountability or transparency on how that money is going to be subdivided in terms of services. Now, I think it would be in the interests of all of us in this council chamber if there was some more clarity and some more transparency on that, so I challenge the councillor Hay and others to come back to us on how they're going to spend that money, because that will be useful, and we can hopefully have some sensible suggestions on how that money is allocated and where it will be allocated to. That will be a useful bargain to be struck with the capable in this chamber, with the people across this chamber, we can all chip into that conversation usefully. We could also perhaps chip in usefully some conversation about how the customer service function of this council is delivered, because I understand there is a significant contract that's been allocated to improving the failing call centre operation. I understand, and I'm not trying to denigrate the work that is being done by the people on the end of the phone lines who are receiving the phone calls, that often have to involve waits of 40, 45 minutes to get through to the council in the first place. This is an ongoing battle on all kinds of issues, and I certainly get that from people who are trying to get through ringing house ringing pairs, but also on environmental and neighbourhood services as well. So there is a problem on that. There is some money being spent, I understand, in terms of trying to transform that operation, but I have seen precious little back in terms of reporting on that, in terms of cabinet reports, or in terms of debate reports in this council chamber. So happy to have that conversation with the party opposite on how you are doing that, and how you're looking to improve that performance, because it's not adequate at present, it needs to be improved. And so anything that we can do to help to educate you and improve your performance on that, we will happily contribute to that debate, but frankly, the best thing that can be done in terms of improving the services of councils of this city will be to sweep away the current incumbents in May and have something better in place. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stone. I now call on councillor Mitchell to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I do wish some of the members opposite would actually listen to comments rather than just reading out speeches that they prepared three hours before, because my opening remarks would make it very clear that this was not about council staff, that this- that this was not about council staff, that this was not about council officers, that it was about the political leadership of this Labour cabinet in this city. We are not doing down the city. We are not doing down the staff. We are not doing down the officers. We are doing down the 10 people who are in charge and should be actually making better decisions for this city. Let's talk about this fridge for a second. Because you've just said three to six weeks is fine. Really, once again, the response from this cabinet is to defend the indefensible rather than to say, how do we change things so these things are done better? And that comes from the top. That does not come from staff, that does not come from officers. That comes with you getting on and doing the job that you're elected to do. So there are complaints about services. And rather than quoting statistics and rather than say, oh, it's not as bad as it was, or rather than talk about money, actually listen to what residents are saying. And when they say there's a problem, when they say there's a problem, actually talk to them about how we can make things better. I welcome the commitments that have been given on weeds. I think we can move forward and I thank councillor Peters for her remarks, which I think are very helpful. But this is only one issue. And frankly, I do not want to be back in this chamber every two or three months talking about yet another service that this council needs to improve because you are not focused on improving services to residents.
Thank you very much. Is the amendment agreed? No, okay, well, I've voted indecently. Start the vote. Right, is everybody can or they have finished voting electronically? If you haven't managed to vote electronically and you're in favour of the amendment, please show. So you're voting in favour of... Well, I haven't come to that yet. All right. Right, those of you who are against the amendment and haven't managed to vote electronically, please show. Oh, sorry, how many abstentions? It's 34 the amendment and 28 against. So does council agree the amended motion? Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item 13, which will be the final item on the agenda tonight. Can I say two things first of all? When a member went off ill earlier, I said to the sheriff that I wouldn't feel right using a casting vote under those circumstances. But anyway, I do believe that something as important as removing the leader should not come down to the use of a casting vote by the lord mayor. So if this ends in a tie, there will be no casting vote used. Can I call on councillor Mark Donnelly to move the motion to be seconded by councillor Tracy Mitchell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In this very chamber, back in December of last year, a motion was brought by the Liberal Democrats to remove the leader of council, citing chaos and rebellion, claiming there was no clear mandate to govern, and asserting that the administration was not listening to residents. So what has changed since then? Time and time again, in this chamber, the administration has demonstrated that it does not listen. There has been no point at which it is clear that they now hold a mandate. The people of South Jessmond certainly would not agree. Unbelievably, the leader of the Liberal Democrats now claims that he doesn't understand why this is being pushed now and insists we must follow the right process. Yet, only two months into Karen Kilgore's leadership, he led a vote of no confidence against her. If a conclusion could be reached in two months, why not after nearly a year? Here we are, nine months later, with a council having no overall control since November of last year. Facing ongoing uncertainty in its ability to make key decisions, the administration has failed to secure the support for a renewed council plan, leaving the council without strategic direction of its own. Currently, the administration is relying on plans inherited from its predecessor. Many councillors remain deeply concerned that the leader has failed to publicly condemn offensive remarks made about members of the public during a council meeting. The failure to act has caused reputational damage to the council and most importantly, it has eroded public trust. Despite a full debate on the Waste Incinerator contract resulting in a vote against proceeding, the administration, lacking overall control, chose to proceed with the contract through a cabinet decision. The council also failed to act when a confidential internal process was leaked to the press, both at the outset and the conclusion, bringing further reputational damage to this authority. Lord Mayor, with no overall control, no council plan belonging to the current administration, a failure to uphold standards of accountability and public respect and a failure to protect the council's reputation, we believe the leader no longer commands the confidence of this chamber. We further believe the leader cannot remain in post without a clear and renewed mandate from this council, which can only be tested through a vote under Article 7 of the Constitution, the mechanism for testing the leadership confidence. We therefore resolve, in accordance with Article 7, to remove the leader from office with immediate effect. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. councillor Tracy Mitchell to second.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So, why am I second in this motion? Living in this city is amazing. But I would say that as I've lived in the outer west of Newcastle all my life. I became a councillor because I wanted to play my part in helping residents and improve the area. But now I stand here and ask myself, are we really delivering what residents want? If we ask residents, they don't ask for the impossible. Clean streets, grass cut, maintenance of paths and roads, services that deliver. But that is not really the reality residents feel. They feel like they're being forgotten, not listened to. If there are consultations, they are pointless, decisions have already been made and residents live with the consequences. Even councillors are not listened to, as we've seen with the motion on the incinerator, which our wishes have been ignored and rubber stamped anyway, not really democracy. And it's not so much about the actual contract, but the actual length. And as was said by councillor Hay, we have no idea what will happen with technology. Technology is absolutely changing rapidly. So why would we tie ourselves to such a long contract of 40 years? I really don't understand that. Major investments such as the Northumberland Street and the Outer West Pool is painfully slow and in fact not a brick in sight for the Outer West Pool and now needs to go back to planning by changing the design because of rising costs. And to the outside world, it looks like the mismanagement of the administration. And I say the administration, not the council officers. This goes for investment too. I want to see Newcastle attract well-paid jobs and to look to the future for the next generation and beyond. We rely heavily on the service industry. But if we constantly squeeze money from hardworking people with council tax rises, business rates, then people have less money to spend in the community and our economy falters and only harms our city. I do believe we need a reset. I mean, even look at David's question tonight about accessibility. That is a total failure. Whoever is responsible for getting it done, we just need to do it. I mean, we talk about birds in trees and yet we cannot have disabled using a major bus station. That is an utter disgrace. It's a failure and we have too many stories like this. Residents fighting for services, repairs that should be standard. This is not about council officers. This is about the Labour administration running the council, your decisions. We need to do better. The residents need to do better. And as councillor Power had said before, the decade of cuts, yes, it has harmed Newcastle. But now we have a Labour government and now we need to stand and say, we need the money that you said you were going to give us when the Labour government came into power.
Thank you very much. We'll now move on to the debate. And first of all, I'll call on councillor Kilgore. Can councillor Ferguson please stand ready?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As I've said in this chamber before, it is the honour of my life to serve as leader of this council. I take my role and my responsibilities to residents very seriously. I'm afraid I can't see the same sincerity in the motivation for this motion. This month marks my administration's first year in office and in that short time, we've achieved much to be proud of. To name just a few highlights, my leadership brings growth, 120 million pounds for fourth yards regeneration and 40 million pounds for neighbourhood funding for Walker and Elzeck, Warner Studios coming to Newcastle and 6 million pounds to complete the restoration of the Tyne Bridge. And we're investing in our communities right now. 50 million pounds to roads and footpath repairs and 1.5 million pounds for inclusive play areas. Over 1.5 million pounds to restore neighbourhood pride. We regained green flags for our parks. We directed 1 million pounds into pensioners missing out on fuel support. Invested almost 4 million pounds in free school meal vouchers and introduced auto enrolment so that no child misses out. A free book every month for five years for every child born this municipal year. And we've just announced funding for youth work in hotspots across the city. We're raising Newcastle's profile and championing our assets on the world stage, hosting fantastic global events like the MOBOs and the Mercury Prize. And we've brought the budget of this core city in on target. Real delivery, real results, and we're only just getting started. Now councillor Donnelly's motion suggests I don't have a mandate. He is wrong. I was elected as leader at last October's meeting of council, which was endorsed in December when the last attempted vote of no confidence fell. I echo councillor Ferguson's words in the press yesterday. It is unclear what the movers of this motion hope to achieve. Even if the motion passed, Labour would still be the biggest, the largest group and I'd still be its leader. Do they truly believe that the five opposition groups and six independent members could suddenly unite behind one leader just months before all-out elections? And then deliver a balanced budget in March? That is fantasy. This motion is short-sighted and ill-judged. A personal attack dressed up as politics with no regard to the consequences for our residents, this city or this council. We are in unprecedented times, not just for this council but for our country. We are learning how to navigate the reality of no overall control as members and as an organisation. I hope my fellow group members, my fellow group leaders will acknowledge that I have approached this role with openness, honesty and a spirit of collaboration. Yes, we hold different political views. But where consensus has been possible, I have sought it. And at no point have I descended into the personal. In some very challenging moments for our city and for our citizens, my leadership has been steady and principled because it puts the interests of our communities first. To vote for this motion will destabilise the council, undermine confidence in the city and put at risk desperately needed investment. It is not good for our city, our residents or our staff. I would ask colleagues across the chamber to act responsibly, concentrate on what we're here to do, serve our residents and reject the motion. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Can councillor Hay stand by please, councillor Ferguson?
Lord Mayor, on Saturday, the far right marched on the streets of Newcastle. The spectre of fear, hate and division was held back by a strong showing from proud Geordie counter protesters. Across the country, disparate elements are profiting from division and lack of delivery. The Labour government is currently failing on its own terms. And closer to home, this Labour administration is showing its fatigue and lack of direction after 15 years in charge. Since the Liberal Democrats first tested if councillor Kilgore had the confidence of this chamber, Labour have lost several votes in council meetings. That was to be expected. They have won others. The overall circumstances have not changed. And so what does this motion seek to do? If it passes, we will be leaderless for a month. We will be presented with a Labour alternative that will champion the same policy prospectus for a scant five months. The political calculus will remain the same. Could someone else do it? Could I do it? I make no secret of my aim to be the leader of this council. But the route to do that is with the support of the electorate. It's clear there is no route here. I only wish polling day were tomorrow. Do we have confidence in Labour? No. Do we think they are even doing a half decent job? No. But if the city needs a council plan and a budget that really starts to deliver for residents, this motion won't deliver that either. Lord Mayor, I am no more and no less than a faithful servant of this city. It's my home. It's where my children were born. I will always put the interests of Newcastle first and foremost before myself. I can do nothing else. Newcastle deserves better than this serial instability. But there are some in this chamber more interested in perpetuating it and putting words in my mouth. Who profits from division? Who wins from chaos? I'm not sure that it's any of us here and I'm absolutely certain it's not the city. No, this motion seeks to solve a problem in this chamber caused by some members of this chamber that can only be resolved at the ballot box. I want a Liberal Democrat administration in this chamber with every fibre of my being. That will stand for the values of transparency, decency, openness and tolerance. That will tackle the social care and special educational needs funding crises. That will put frontline services back in the front and centre where they deserve to be. Delivering that is putting the city first. With respect to the movers, this motion is not. It is ill-advised.
Thank you very much. By the way councillor, I was aware it was time. I did give councillor Kilgore about an extra 15 to 20 seconds. So I thought it was fair to give the leader of the opposition a little bit of extra time too. Right. Can councillor Hartley stand by please, councillor here?
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
And you won't get any extra time.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Every councillor in this chamber was elected to put residents first. This motion does the opposite. It would create division and instability at the very moment our city needs unity and leadership. At a time when trust in politics is at an all-time low, we should be showing leadership, not indulging in... not indulging in division. With our residents, businesses, investors, and staff watching us this evening, this motion sends the wrong message. It tells them that some councillors are more focused on internal disputes than on delivering the services our residents expect. Now, under Karen's leadership, we have steered the council through one of its most challenging years. Despite the constraints of no overall control, Karen has led an administration that is delivering for Newcastle. This motion is not simply an attack on one person. It risks unravelling the stability and leadership our city needs now. In my own portfolio, the record speaks for itself. In March, we took the difficult decision to bring urban green back into direct council control. Since then, Leasers and Walker Parks have regained their green flag status. We are redeveloping play spaces across the city to make them fully inclusive with equipment and design that let children of all abilities play side by side. We have simplified recycling, expanded plastics and food waste trials, run pop-up recycling events, and secured investment to tackle chewing gum and littering, improving the appearance of our streets. We are also increasing biodiversity by planting more trees than most councils, 1,000 trees across 200 sites in the past year. This success has been recognised with the city being named a Tree City of the World for a second year running. Far from not listening to the chamber, we have. We have worked across this chamber through a variety of methods. We've worked at Constitutional Committee to bring a governance review that meets the needs of residents and councillors and is supported by members across the chamber. That collaborative spirit, not division and instability, is what residents expect of us. Our residents deserve a council that is united, focused, and determined to keep delivering for us. They do not want disruption or political distraction, they want stability and leadership. I urge colleagues to reject this motion.
Thank you very much. Councillor Haye? Can councillor Byrne stand ready, please? Councillor Hartley?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. At the last no-confidence vote, I stood up and called for councillor Kilgore to show the kind of collective leadership that would address the serious concerns raised. Residents want to see us working together for the good of our city, though some of the speeches in the last motion show that we've got a long way to go. On Saturday, I made a similar plea for collaboration. I stood at the Rally for Unity, speaking to people from across our city and region standing up to hate and division. It is clear that actions of successive governments have led to many across our communities feeling hurt, scared, and anger. I was calling us to be compassionate, to turn into this pain, to listen. Now, my view is that cross-party working is modelling a shift locally, and I want to thank councillor Kilgore, councillor Ferguson, councillor Mitchell, and councillor Williams for doing that. An agreement for an independent inquiry into the culture of our council, which was reaffirmed today, has been committed to. Regular leaders' meetings so that we as groups have more opportunities to feed in resident voice to council decisions. Hey, maybe we can even get agreement across the chamber to campaign for a fairer electoral system. You know, if we had proportional representation, we'd really have to work together. That would be democracy. Now, that doesn't take away anything from the fact that the Labour groups still hold responsibility for running this council right now. The Labour Party under Keir Starmer is proving such an embarrassing disappointment. They're letting themselves down and letting our communities down. Newcastle Labour, will you be the change your party and our city needs? Will you call out your own when disgraceful comments are made on a hot mic about residents? Will you operate in good faith when opposition group leaders engage with the council plan and suggest constructive improvements? Will you commit to protecting stepping stones to wildlife enhancement corridors in the local plan? Will you charter courses for community wealth building to benefit the parts of our city that have been harmed the most? Will you listen when we make our democratic voices heard with votes in the chamber? This council does not have the powers to dissolve itself and call early elections, but clearly residents want change, and if we could have early elections, we Greens would be saying, bring it on! It is not clear from the proposals of this no-confidence vote how the appointment of a new leader for four months would start to resolve the many problems this council faces. Tearing things down is easy, building something better is the hard bit. So let's focus on what matters. Construct governance fit for multi-party politics, work with all parties and residents to build the council plan, and then let residents choose the direction of this council in May. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can councillor Irrom Ali please stand ready? Councillor Byrne?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's definitely something wrong with this council. There is a culture of secrecy. How much money is the council paying to host the Mercury Prize? Residents aren't allowed to know. What discussions have the council had with Newcastle United about Leasers Park? I've been trying to find out for months, and have had to resort to submitting an FOI to find out what is happening in the ward that I represent. There is a culture of leaks. It was an outrage that a complaint about a councillor was leaked, and an outrage that the reportant of that complaint was leaked. There's a culture of restricting democracy. With everything that needs to be done in this city, time and resources were spent on reducing scrutiny and making council meetings even less effective. Most damningly, the council is not delivering for residents. Of course austerity has been the main driver in this: less money to spend, less money to defend decisions, which leads to an extremely risk-averse approach, and more reliance on income from business rates. But this council's response to austerity, its failure to focus on doing the very best it can for residents with the resources it does have available, reflects a culture that does not prioritise residents or their rights to have a say in what happens in this city, the right to know what has been done with their money or their land. Obviously, the current administration bears a lot of responsibility for recent issues, and for that reason, although I was not involved in the development of this motion, I will support it. I would caution, however, that the issues at this council are so deep-rooted that they all require more than a change of leadership, however that happens. The tendency to be more interested in Newcastle's role as a regional capital than as a place that works for the people who live there goes back many years, probably as long as the council has existed. And finding a way to reduce the imbalance between residents and the private sector interests under this current economic system will also be a huge challenge. So I'd say to anyone who wants change, yes, it's certainly absolutely necessary, but it will take a lot more than a new face at the top. It'll take a revolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Ali?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Donnelly alluded to chaos, as did the presentation of the last motion of this kind. That is a really strong word, and as far as I can see, Lord Mayor, decisions are still being made, residents are still accessing services, the lights are still on, and the doors are still open. What will, however, cause chaos is this motion in action. I want to address the first two bullet points of this motion. I am not going to shy away from the fact that we are in very different and challenging times, whether due to political shifts or rapid social change, during which the composition and operation of local government take on heightened significance. A council with no overall control, where no single party has an outright majority, may seem at first glance to introduce ambiguity. However, such a structure can serve as a powerful tool for managing and mitigating uncertainty in local governance. As of May this year, over one-third of UK councils are operating with no single party in control. That's 161 councils, Lord Mayor. This is an unusual situation for Newcastle, but not for councils more generally. With no one party dominating, we are required to engage more in open dialogue and negotiation. This collaborative approach helps to avoid abrupt policy swings that can arise when a single party changes course, ensuring a steadier, more predictable response to external uncertainties. However, the caveat being that proposals are well-thought-through and deliverable, considering the council's budget and operations. The need for broad support across party lines discourages the pursuit of extreme or divisive measures. Moderate consensus-driven policies can act as stabilisers during these times, providing reassurance to residents and stakeholders. The absence of a single majority party can act as a safeguard, ensuring that significant changes or responses to uncertainty are carefully weighed. This system of mutual oversight enhances public confidence in the council's ability to handle unpredictable situations responsibly. Though some may fear that no overall control in a council introduces confusion, it can instead create a foundation for stability and effective action in uncertain times. By encouraging collaboration, moderation, and innovation, such councils are well-positioned to navigate and even thrive amid uncertainty, delivering steady governance that meets the evolving needs of their communities. Finally, having said all of that, would councillor Donnelly, together with the signatories of this motion, get a grip and work together in this chamber to bring stability amidst change instead of attempting to cause chaos in the face of opportunity? I urge the rest of council to reject this motion and concentrate on the job that we are all elected to do. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. We've reached our maximum number of speakers, so apologies to the two others who wanted to speak. I now call on councillor Donnelly to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Back in December, the Liberal Democrats described this chamber as a place of disorder, destruction, disorganisation, internal wrangling, confusion, chaos, and a breakdown in trust, direction, and delivery. He said the people of Newcastle deserved better. These were not my words, they were theirs. Yet now faced with a clear opportunity to act, the Liberal Democrats may abstain. Abstaining on a matter of principle betrays the people they claim to represent, undermines accountability, and ensures the continuation of the Labour administration they claim to oppose. After previously calling for change, objecting to poor decisions and supporting a vote of no confidence, stepping aside now exposes a lack of moral and political conviction. Labour dismisses this process as political games. Framing a constitutional mechanism as a game shows a disregard for accountability and residents' concerns. The question is clear: are the parties more focused on positioning for power in May than on principled governance? Influence should come from clear policies, not opportunism, not status-seeking. Newcastle deserves an opposition that acts decisively, not one hiding behind procedure and bluster. Councillor Ferguson and the Liberal Democrats must show the conviction they claim and do what is right now. As of today, this is the reality: no council plan, a governance review that has weakened accountability and scrutiny, a council ignoring the will of its residents, proceeding with an incinerator contract despite the majority vote in this chamber. Are we really saying to the people of Newcastle that we cannot do better? Before you vote, I ask you to ask yourself one question: what has changed since December? If like us, you believe the situation has worsened, let your vote reflect the reality. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is the motion agreed?
No.
Okay. Linda, can we move to the votes? Last of the chatter, please. Okay, I'll now move on to those who haven't been able to vote electronically. Oops, still going. Right, those of you who haven't been able to vote electronically, those in favour of the motion, please show. Those against the motion, please show. And anyone who's abstaining, please show. Right, in favour of the motion was seven, against 31, and there were 19 abstentions. Thank you very much. Now, as agreed by councillor earlier, the guillotine has now fallen, so I'll go through the rest of the business and ask members what they would like to do. The next one is eight and 14, notice of motion: crackdown on illegal motorbikes. Oh, councillor Donnelly, Mark Donnelly?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't formally say the motion was rejected. Okay, yes. So councillor Donnelly, do you... your motion on illegal motorbikes, do you want...
I'll defer it.
You'll defer it? Okay, thank you very much. Notice of motion international aid, councillor Taylor?
Defere.
Defere? Okay, thank you very much. Well, that's the close of the meeting. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for attending this meeting, and I look forward to seeing you at the next meeting, which is matchday for the Champions League. Thank you.